For, you know, taking time this morning to be here. We have a lot to cover. I would just ask that we try to wrap it up by noon. I unfortunately cannot stay past noon. If it extends past noon, the President's not going to be here. So if we could try to keep things moving right along. With that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Mary Ann.
Thank you. And thank you for inviting me to be here today. As you know, I am the school committee attorney. And when I was approached by your administrator to do this presentation, I said, sure. But I didn't, I wanted to know how your solicitor fit in. We work really well together. And if you have any questions at the end of this presentation, you can always contact me or you can contact your solicitor and he can clear anything up. What I did, and I have to say what my assistant did, was put a binder together for you today, which is Town Council 101. The PowerPoint that we're going over is in this binder. And there's no reason why you couldn't electronically, if you haven't already given it out to the committee. We also, I also put in the binder your charter as well as some information on, from the Ethics Committee, as well as some information on the open meeting law. I also put in your binder a nice laminated Robert's Rules. I'm going to tell you that it's more than you need to know, but it's a nice handy card to have and it makes you look important, like you know what you're doing if you have it. You know, I was actually talking to a solicitor in another town on Thursday night and he said, "Mary Ann, they don't need to know Robert's Rules." Like, they need to know like five or six of them and then, you know, look to the solicitor for any other questions or concerns. But it is a nice clean copy, other than the booklet, which I don't know that I've ever, I've never read the whole thing through. But you do have resolution that you follow Robert's Rules. So, you know, that's why I wanted to include it in your binder. And I wanted to give you something very nice. So I guess the first thing I need to say to you is congratulations. You've been elected to a body that'll be governing the team for the, you're part of the team for the Town of Portsmouth. I say that in a very strong manner. And I say this whenever I'm in service of public body. You are one person in a team. Individually, you have no power. Your power comes by counting the votes. So where you have a seven-member school commit, I mean, sorry, seven-member Town Council, you have power when three other people agree with you. Individually, there is no power. So that may sometimes, as somebody new, who's here for the first time ever? So, just one of you? Wow. So, you know, I mean, you may get elected, I've been elected to a Town Council a couple of times, a school committee a couple of times. You get elected and you have all these great ideas, but you've got to make sure the rest of your team also agrees to those ideas. It's hard, I know. Then they had done it. Now, during this presentation today, I wanted to, I did a lot of reviewing of your materials. Your ability to govern basically comes out of statute, charter, and resolution. Under statutes, we have ethics statutes and OMA statutes. The charter of the Town of Portsmouth, I used a great deal in doing this presentation. And you have, you have passed resolutions, one of them being to follow Robert's Rules. Now, you can always change a resolution. The charter takes a vote of the elected members of the Town of Portsmouth, so you can't change the charter. You can't change statute unless your legislators turn around and change the statute. Now, I also want to say that in terms of ethics, it's also a Rhode Island constitutional piece that we have to be ethical as Town elected or any elected official. So you're governed by all these different groups. And I say that because it's very different from school committees who are governed by statute. If you were on the school committee, you're governed by statute as to what power you have. You're governed by statute that you have to have a superintendent. In towns across Rhode Island, everybody doesn't have a town administrator. Some people have nothing, some people have town administrators, some people have mayors. But your governing structure, appointing a town administrator, comes from your charter. Okay. And I think I've already said this, no individual member of the council, including the President, has any authority without the vote of the majority of the council. Can't stress that enough. I've gotten in trouble thinking I had power in the past. And that's why I know it's such an important thing to share with you. The powers of the Town Council are identified in your charter. And it's in your Charter, Section 209, which tells you what you can do. Again, we want to make sure, and this we have probably in every presentation that we do for any board, any council, any school committee, there's no I in team. You are a team. Committees act through votes and then directs the administrator and or legal council. Now, let me explain what I mean by that. Again, no one of you individually has the authority, according to charter or statute or law, to direct the town administrator to do anything. You get your authority to tell him what to do, and it's him because it's Rick. You tell him what to do by vote of your council. And the same thing with your legal council. Now, some of you may contact him on a regular basis, but you don't have an authority to tell him what to do without the vote of the, the majority vote of your Town Council.
And that also flows down to his subordinates. So you can't go to the police chief and say, hey, I want you to-
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Absolutely. You're ahead of me, but you're absolutely right. So while you've just mentioned that, what you need to understand is, again, you don't have the authority to go to the highway director, to go to the finance director, to go to any of the directors in the town and tell them what to do. Anytime they need to be told what to do, by vote of the council, you go to the administrator and you direct him to do whatever you want to do. Now, I say this with superintendents when I do presentations for school committees. I'm going to say that here. If you don't like what he's doing, your only ramification or your only, the only thing you can do is fire him. And I've said that, in other words, he is, he's your CEO. He runs your town. Motions of committees direct him what to do. Day-to-day business is his responsibility. If you don't like the way he's running your town, you as a council, if you had four votes, could vote to terminate his employment with you. But that's your only ability when it comes to the town administrator. When I said that, when I, when I in-serviced the school committee a couple of terms ago and somebody said, well, what can we tell Anna to do? And I said, well, you know, this is what her role is. I said, and the only thing you can do is fire her. She got a little upset. But really, that's your only role if you don't like what the town administrator's doing. Sorry, Rick. I don't, hope you don't mind.
Don't put anything in your head.
Even, even with your legal council, your solicitor. Your solicitor, the same way as I am to the school committee, we work at the pleasure of the, of the council and/or the school committee. You can hire us or fire us at any time. And I say that to my own, the people that I do represent, to my own committees. If you don't like what I do and you prefer to go somewhere else, I'm going to say to you, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to serve you. And I leave. Because we work at the pleasure of the bodies that we represent. Also, keep in mind, your solicitor works for you. Now, he's probably in a lot more contact on a day-to-day with your town administrator, but he doesn't represent your town administrator. He represents you. And therefore, he takes order and directive from you.
That's a good question.
Of course.
So we're going to talk about Rich's priorities in the next session. If he is working on priority A, and four of us vote to have him stop working on priority A and work on priority B, you're saying that we can't go make a resolu-
No, I'm saying if there are four people that say yes, I'm saying you can. By motion of the council, depending on how you adopt his, I'm sure this, and again, I'm not, I don't know exactly what you mean by his priorities. Probably his goals that, like, like you may, he may have goals that you're going to give him to do in the next year. There are three goals, four goals. If you give him three or four goals and you may say to him, we want you to prioritize. We want goal number three to come before goal number one. Absolutely. By vote of the council. But you as an individual counselor can't go to him and say, Rick, stop working on number one, I want you to go to number three. Okay? Does that, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Outside of this group, we are private citizens and that's it.
Yeah, well, yeah. You're still elect, you're still an elected official and you're still governed by OMA and ethics, but yes, you have no more authority to tell him what to do with the department heads than anybody else in the, in the Town of Portsmouth. Leonard.
I just wanted, thank you. I just want to clarify my, my mind that that's true for every member of the council, including the President. The President may be in touch with the administrator on a more regular basis, tending to some administrative matters, but also can't tell-
Oh, yeah. And I think Kevin, Kevin knows that and-
No, I know that, but it's the perception of the public.
Okay. So let's, let's talk about that for a little bit more because that always becomes a difficult fine line. Because he's the President, you've, you've elected him to be your leader. So he's going to have more direct communication with the town administrator. But again, his communication is to, what, how are we going to set the agenda? What's going to be on the agenda? What should we look at? Again, he individually-
I need to interrupt and say, we have our own, we have, we've adopted special rules of procedure that address our agenda.
Yeah, they're in the, I saw them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so that gets the town clerk and us, and us council members who set the agenda. Schedule, I served up, I didn't raise my hand to say I'm new, but I am new, I shouldn't have, I haven't served on the council for 10 years.
I remember when you were on the council.
Yeah, I had less gray hair than that.
Guys, so I want to be totally honest, we went to law school together as both our second careers and stuff.
Yes. Bob, you must be old.
Yes. Yes.
How to win tax returns with those people.
Yeah. We'll never be as old as you though.
This is going to be a fun show.
The only reason I'm kind of building on this question is some of how we operate as a council is through customs, how we, how we work together. And those customs have evolved over the past 10 years. So here I am walking into a council and I'm sort of not new. But I am new to the extent that there's been at least three or maybe four Presidents prior, since I've been here, four. And each council has its own favorite, its own differences. So here I am walking in essentially with a different understanding of what our customs are than people who've been here more recently.
Is, do we have YouTube on this?
We do now.
Hello.
Hey.
Hi, Andrew.
Ahead.
This is a wonderful century, isn't it?
I'm sorry.
So with all that as framing, it's just why we wanted to sort of get a better understanding amongst ourselves.
Well, to that, I mean, one of the big changes was in 2012 when we changed the charter in 14 to the dateless that kind of reemphasized the authority of the council. And there's a few things in there that did change. That limited the scope of the council specifically. 10 years ago and even up to six years ago, the council did interviews of prospective police officers, firefighter, some things like that. We don't do that anymore.
Thank goodness.
Because in your charter, the hire-fire is very clear. You can't hire anybody or fire anybody without the recommendation of the town administrator.
And that was, that was a clarification back in 14.
Yeah. And, and again, this is something that is very similar now to how the school department runs, that, you know, the school committee can't hire and fire without the recommendation of the superintendent, other than the school committee-
Tell him to mute himself.
Andrew, mute yourself.
Mute the microphone.
Andrew, can you mute yourself?
You can, you know, Ted, you can just open the app, order a hit next.
I don't have sound? No, I don't have sound.
Okay. Can you mute yourself?
Okay. I can hear you now.
Okay. But can you mute yourself because of the background noise?
You're making a hell of a lot of noise.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I was, actually, I was surprised to see this in your, in your charter. Because again, because you're not governed by statute as to what your roles and responsibilities and duties are, every Town Council is different. There are Town Councils that do appoint and hire or interview all of the department heads and things like that. You're, really, you're limited to the hiring and firing of the administrator and of the legal council. Other than that, everything comes through your administrator. So you don't like somebody, well, unless he recommends that that person be terminated, that person continues to work. Again, if you want to get rid of that person and he doesn't want to get rid of that person, you get rid of him. I mean, that's the only way you can do it. So again, everything comes through an administrator.
That's what I said to East Greenwich.
Hey, come on, I just did a lot of work for East Greenwich. Okay. So it's your charter, Article 3, that directs the council to appoint a town administrator. Again, the town administrator is specific to towns. There are some that have mayors, there are some where, I live in Gloucester, we have nothing. We have a Town Council that runs the town. Now, think how complicated that is. He's, again, he's the head of the administrative branch, he's responsible for all of the affairs of the town, and his duties are specifically outlined in your charter. And again, for those of you that, the chart is very, can be found very easily online, but I actually printed it and put it in your, in your books. This, we've already talked about a lot already. This is the non, you have a very clear non-interference clause. And I think you've all alluded to it in the conversation that we've had. We, anything you do has to be through the administrator. So as I think Counselor Hamilton mentioned, you can't go to, you can't go to a department head and tell them what to do. But you can, I, do you have liaisons where somebody's on, somebody's on recreation? I mean, obviously, if you're the liaison, you're going to have more of a communication with that, that department head. But if you get unhappy about what that department head is doing because you happen to know a little bit more, you need to go to the administrator. Okay. You're, you're a relatively brand-new council. We say this all the time, be civil. I can, I can be elected with you, I can, I can hate you, but when you are sitting in the public body and you're being taped and you're in the public, try to be civil to one another. And again, I'm not saying that because I know that you are or you haven't been, but it's just good practice. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I haven't moved on in my head to this topic yet. One last question, please. This is a change from last time I served on the council where the town clerk was a independent elected position and was not, you know, subordinate of the town administrator. My council practice when I last sat on the council was all correspondence in, to the council and from the council, everything went through the town clerk's office. The town clerk does serve as clerk to the council under state law. And, and I just want to make sure that now that that position is in fact subordinate, or reports to, in some sense, the town administrator, that council members, it's still proper for us to send correspondence to and-
According to the new char, the update of the charter, the only thing that changed was elected to appointed.
So your correspondence still goes to gen? Absolutely. But that doesn't mean that if you're sending an email, you can't copy it into town.
Oh, sure.
Can we hear you?
Yeah. Sorry.
My saying for the past four years is that we can disagree, but we don't have to be disagreeing.
I love that. And I also want to say to you, I want to be able to, I've been, a lot of, a lot of boards that I've been, I've been a Town Councilor, I've been a school committee member, I've been a state rep. I, in a lot of those roles, I was in the minority. So I could vigorously object to something and rule in the, in the minority, but I was never in the point where I couldn't then go out for a drink with them afterwards, for whatever. You know, you want to, you want to disagree, but you want to be civil about it. And your disagreement is in the decisions you make. And as I said, to the, to the, to the Town of Portsmouth, to the people that have elected you, you can take a stand, you can vote against something, you can vehemently state while you're voting against it, but you need to do it in a professional way. You don't want to be that counselor that everybody talks about as being that difficult person on the council. And you, in the, I mean, I know, I could tell you counselors and school committees in the past where I could tell you who those individuals were. You don't want to be that person. We recommend you don't criticize the department head or the administrator in public. You know, we don't want to air our, our dirty laundry in public. If you have a problem, you bring it to the administrator. Let him address it. But at a public Town Council meeting, it's just not good practice to criticize a department head or the administrator in a public session. If you need a legal opinion, try to ask for that legal opinion either in an executive session or through the administrator individually. It's very hard, and I can tell you from my own experience, to give a legal opinion on the spot. Sometimes we need to research stuff. If I don't know the answer to something, I will simply say, let me get back to you. But again, legal opinions, you really should be careful about asking for them in, in public for an immediate legal opinion. You know, if you, if you need an opinion as to a contract or, or an issue that's come in front of you, you may ask the solicitor, could you get, could you research this and get back to us? But immediate legal opinions are difficult. Dealing with the press, this is my interesting thing. You know, you're all going to have your own position in dealing with the press. However, what we're going to tell you is that really, no comment is always in fashion. If there's some big issue in town, you might want to have one spokesperson. And it's, be careful not to make a statement that can hurt the town. Even if you're in disagreement with something that's happening, cushion your remarks so what, what you say doesn't hurt the Town of Portsmouth. Again, sometimes when you make some of these statements, it then becomes the solicitor's job to now figure out how to get you out of the mess that you yourself into. Less is always best. No offense, when it comes to the press, less is always best. Okay. Your Town Council meetings, as I said, you have resolution and that was the number, it was updated in December. Your solicitor, what, I mean, your town administrator provided me with that resolution. It says you're going to follow Robert's Rules. There are basic rules you need to follow, there are basic rules you need to know, and then everything else is, is good reading when you can't sleep at night. And again, you have a solicitor that sits at your meetings, if something gets too complicated, you turn to him to help you kind of figure out, you know, those particular motions that you don't normally make. The one that comes to mind is, what if you guys have a meeting and you vote, you have seven, four to three to do something? And then one of the four decides, oh, I made a mistake. I want to reconsider that motion. You need to know how to correctly bring it back on so that you can vote it again. Okay? So a vote to reconsider is something you might want to check with your solicitor before you do. But simple motions, you should know very clearly. You know, again, motions, you need to, before you have discussion, you need to make a motion, it needs to be seconded, and then you have discussion. You don't just start talking about something. And somebody can second a motion and be against it, just to bring it up for discussion. But without it, but without a, a motion and a second, there's no discussion.
Someone can bring forward, somebody can make a motion themselves and vote against it as well.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. Absolutely. But again, you want the discussion, you want the debate. Now, according to what I read, any counselor can place an item on the agenda, but it needs to be submitted to the town clerk by Tuesday. Your meeting's a Thursday, correct?
Our meeting is Monday.
Okay. So your meetings are Monday. The reason by Tuesday is to give her enough time to compile that agenda. Keep in mind, we have to post 48 business hours before the meeting. So if she's got a Monday meeting, you've got to get that posted by Thursday.
Thursday, absolute latest.
So she needs time to get that agenda. These don't, I mean, first of all, your normal agendas are about three pages and it takes time to get everything on it and all the backup. So in fairness to her, you set the rules that say Monday and Tuesday at noon, try to adhere to them. Now, if something emergency comes up and something you just became aware of and she can accommodate you, well, that's, that's fine, but try really hard considering what she has to do to get that agenda together. Because remember, she's got to get it printed, she's got the backup, she's got to get it posted. These things don't happen overnight. Unless you've done an agenda yourself and unless you've seen the work that goes into putting all that material agenda, you don't realize what a large job it is. I bet, and I'm going to, I'm going to, she doesn't have to answer, I bet from as soon as your meeting is over on Monday night, she's already starting trying to compile stuff for your next meeting. Because you meet twice a month, correct?
Twice a month.
Yeah. So I mean, it's a lot of work. Is that-
And that's just one, like, seventh of my department's job.
Your job. Right. Right. So again, this is almost out of professional courtesy to her.
And to go along with that is, is to make sure that if you do have backup, that you're providing that at the same time. Don't make her chase for the backup as well. That's one of the bigger headaches.
The other thing is, is if we wait until Thursday, if something needs to be changed, I, it can't be changed.
Right. So. So last week in one of the districts that I'm involved in, there was a Tuesday, there was a Tuesday night meeting, so that meant that the agenda had to be posted by Friday. The meeting was at 6:00, so it had to be on the Secretary of State's by 6:00 on Friday. For some reason, there was a glitch in the system and they, they changed the, the administrator couldn't get it on, the meeting had to be canceled. And everything was ready and she was trying to on Friday, plenty of time, she couldn't get it, there was, I, I understand they changed within the last couple of weeks, I can put something on it, on the Secretary of State's website. That whole meeting was canceled.
Mary Ann, if I could just-
Sure.
So what we're doing now, the rule to get it in by noon on Tuesday remains, but so that there is a little bit more leeway and in deference to the counselors who have asked to have more time to review the agenda before the next meeting, our goal now is to get it out by Wednesday. But that means we now have one less day to chase backup. So if the backup doesn't come, it's, it'll be a discussion between me and the President and the clerk.
So a couple of days ago, when I shared this with the administrator, I have a son who is a Town Councilor in Clarkstown, New York. He had been a Town Councilor in Gloucester before he moved to New York. So he's got quite a bit of experience being a member of a Town Council. I said to him, what is the one most important thing that I should tell this Town Council on Saturday? He said, stop for a minute. And he said, Ma, tell them to read the agenda ahead of time and if they have any questions, call them.
Yes.
Wait, what?
He said, I am so sick and tired of sitting at meetings where there'll be one or two people who won't have read the agenda and then will have all of these basic questions that could have easily been answered if they had only read it and called the administrator the day before or the morning of or before. Because if you don't read the agenda, you waste time of the meeting. And I don't know about you, but I don't like to sit at meetings for three, four, I, I want to get out. I want to get the business done of, of my, of my board and leave. But if there's somebody that can't read the agenda, it just causes a problem for everybody else. So he, that was his first comment, is, Ma, tell them to read the agenda. So when you get that agenda, you get a lot of backup. I can't get over the kinds of backups that come out with agendas nowadays. When I served on a Town Council many years ago in Gloucester, we probably got two or three pages. Now you're getting, I've printed agendas, some of them have 100 pages of backup easily. So, you know, read it ahead of time so that you can answer the questions. Let's, and again, this is recommendations from the work that we do with a lot of different committees. Before you go to put an item on, you as a counselor have every right to put an item on the agenda. I'm not saying you don't, it's in your charter, that's your right. But discuss those with the town administrator first. Make sure that it's something that hasn't already been done or hasn't already been decided or hasn't got other information before it goes on the agenda. I, I also recommend that you don't promise constituents that an answer will be on agenda. Respond with, I'll look into it. Now, I don't know about you- Now, I don't know about you, but because we're public officials, when I was a public official, everybody had my phone number. And, you know, you'd get call after call after call after call. And if I get five calls from people that want stuff on the agenda, I'm going to add, if everybody's adding five things to the agenda, then now we've got an agenda of 35 items other than the regular routine items. So, well, first of all, I stopped taking a lot of the calls. I just, I look at the number, sunny and sun. If I didn't recommend, if I didn't recognize the number, I don't answer it. And at some point, you need to say, you know what, I'll look into that. And if it's something we can, you know, we can put on, or maybe it'll have to be a later meeting, or maybe it's going to be consolidated. So try really hard to limit the number of items that you want on the agenda other than the regular. Again, discuss it with your town administrator. That's not to say you can't. If you want something on the agenda, you have every right, under your charter, to call the town clerk and put it on the agenda. It's just a recommendation that you try to consolidate, be concise about different topics that are on the agenda. You're going to want to research stuff, too. And again, that's where you call the administrator, call the clerk. It might have been something that was on before you even became elected. Okay, so managing meetings. In terms of Robert's rules, again, we talked about it. First, you motion, then you second, then you discuss, debate, vote. It's my understanding that your, the way you handle it here is you motion, you second, the council discusses, and then you see if anybody in the public wants to add to that discussion. We're going to talk about public comments in a couple of minutes. But what I and Kevin were talking about before the beginning of the meeting was you've got to be consistent with public comments. You've got to, if you have policies or procedures or protocols, and you can do whatever you want, you can have as much public comment or a limited public comment, you don't have to have any public comment if that's what you desire for any specific meeting. You want to be able to be consistent with everybody getting the same rights. Everything you do, again, you want an orderly-run meeting. So everything you do goes through the president. You need to be recognized. If we don't go through the president to be recognized, to speak or debate on an issue, you're going to have bedlam. That's not what you want. You want the people in Portsmouth to see that you're a really well-run body.
Could I just add, that's excellent counsel. I would add that all comments on the Robert's rules are also to be directed to the president. So for example, if a member of the public is speaking at the podium and says something that you feel needs to be addressed, it's best for reasons of civility and keeping things impersonal rather than personal to say to the president, in light of the recent comments, blah, whatever it is, rather than looking, rather than addressing comments to any other individual, all comments should be.
Absolutely, and that's pretty much in Robert's rules.
But it's human nature to look at the person who has spoken, so.
And you know what, it also becomes human nature that you end up in the debate with that person. No. And again, it's common, it's just what you do. You put something on the agenda, somebody gets in the, up on the public and disagrees with you. It's just, it's us that want to, you know, as politicians, we want to debate that with that person. That's not the time or the place to do it. The comment has to be through the president, and you need to say, Mr. President, may I address that? It's common courtesy. It's to keep the meeting as professional as possible. And remember, you want to look like you're a well-run town council to the people of Portsmouth who are at the meeting or watching this meeting. Tables, you need more information, you can't get anywhere. Tabling is a pretty common thing. It's not a debatable motion. If somebody makes a motion to table something, it's seconded, it's just voted up or down. And again, if you don't want to table something, you vote no. But it's not something that's debatable. You can always amend a motion, but we only amend it once. So I make a motion that we're going to give the school department a million dollars. Somebody, and second, we're discussing it, somebody wants to amend it to say, no, I want to only give them 800. That's the new motion that's on the table. That's what you vote on. You vote on that amendment before you could put another amendment on. So something gets amended, that amendment gets voted on. If that amendment gets, if that amendment is voted down, somebody else can then make another amendment. Once an amendment passes, then you have to vote on the main motion that is that amendment. But only one amendment at a time. I sat at a meeting once where there were like three or four amendments on the table. Nobody even knew what they were voting on. Okay, so one amendment at a time.
So how I've seen that work in practice is when there's an amendment on the table, and the discussion that the body indicates that's the wrong amendment, you can't make a motion to amend the amendment. Instead, you just vote on that amendment, it fails, and then you make a new motion to amend it.
Absolutely. And again, that's where your solicitor who's sitting with you should say, wait a minute, we got to vote on this up or down first. But you can, I mean, you can add five amendments, as long as you, every single one of them gets voted on before you put the new one on. There can always be a motion to end debate and move the question. I was always good for this, because there's always somebody that wants to talk about something forever. You know, all right.
Quick question, actually, previous point you made, that did happen a couple of times in the previous council. Whose job is it to point out that there is a motion on the floor, or amendment on the floor, while we are starting to talk about the Second Amendment? Is that the president's job?
President in conjunction. Does your solicitor sit with you at all meetings? When I'm sitting with my, with the committees I sit with, I say, wait a minute, we got to vote on that one first.
Right.
So it's him saying.
Is it the solicitor's job, or is it the president?
President, clerk.
Right.
It's a team.
So under oath, there are, and combined with how we are structured, there are four sources of, you know, motion to, or point of parliamentary procedure, the solicitor, any member of this council. And the town clerk can also point out whatever is pending before the body at the moment. The town clerk can say, Mr. President, and then say, just want to point out, we have. So it can come from four sources.
And you know what I notice at most meetings that I go to? Because I have my own committees, and then I cover, because my, we have a lot of committees in my firm that we cover. And even in ones that I'm not familiar with, that I may go into cover, the person who usually says, wait a minute, there's a motion on the table, is the clerk. They're the ones that are taking the minutes. They've taken the fact that, they've written down that there's been a motion and a second, and until they get a vote, they're usually the first person that'll say to you, stop, you've got to vote this before you move something else.
Yeah, I think it's really important that we defer to clerk, because clerk's job is to make sure everything's properly recorded. So if the clerk ends up in a state where she thinks something's pending in one way, and you vote on something else, then it makes that job impossible.
Because, you know, sometimes even, everybody's in favor of something, but you all want to, you know, say why you're in favor of it, and we get to the point we forgot to even vote it. So again, and it's going to be the clerk who's going to say, wait a minute, I got a motion and a second, but I don't have a vote. Because remember, the president is busy listening to everybody, and acknowledging everybody, and recognizing everybody. Sometimes it gets beyond him, who, whether we voted on something or not. If something gets very heated and gets very long-winded, we forget where we are.
That's my excuse for the last meeting. Jen, keep me out of trouble.
In all fairness, it should be, you know, Jen, and again, the solicitor. Did you already screw up?
Night one, one of the books.
So, isn't that, night one is a difficult night, it really is. And again, a lot of other motions in Robert's rules, I told you, you need to know about five or six of them. That's a nice little cod, and, you know, enjoy reading it.
You only need to know five or six of them. I guess I should read all of it.
Okay. This is something that gets people in trouble all the time. The Open Meeting Act. Now, the law says it's essential that public business be performed in an open and public manner. But the law says, OMA is the quorum, meaning we have four, of a public body, that's four of you, has a meeting. Quorum, public body has a meeting. If any four of you have a meeting, you're triggering the Open Meeting Act.
And let's discuss what a meeting could be.
The four, and that's the next slide. The four of you, again, you must have, quorum means you have a majority. The problem is, a lot of you do this.
Not lots.
I'm going to say, a lot of public bodies, including ones that I have served on, do this. Now let me explain. The four of you, four of you, for whatever reason, decide that you're going to go to Dunkin' Donuts, and you're going to sit in a booth, and you're going to talk about upcoming issues on the agenda. You have now violated the Open Meeting Law. One of you is concerned about an issue in the public. You call, then you call Linda, and the two of you talk about it. Then Linda calls Kevin, and then Kevin calls Kevin. You now have a rolling quorum. I'm sorry, Keith, I'm sorry, Keith. And I don't know your, I got Danielle. Danielle, I just didn't have your name, otherwise you would have been the fourth. That's a rolling quorum. You can't do that. Four of you can't have a conversation. Four of you can't be on an email. If you do that, you have a rolling quorum, you have a violation of the OMA. If somebody complains about it, there will be a complaint filed in either the Attorney General's office or Superior Court. Your solicitor then has a lot of work to do, because then he's going to defend you. By defending you, he's going to be getting affidavits about from all of you, and explaining why you really didn't violate the Open Meeting Law. However, we as solicitors can't lie for you. So if we find out you actually did that, then we're going to have to say, we're sorry, we did it, and try to minimize whatever penalty you're going to get. Normally, you could get a fine, you could be told that whatever you decided doesn't, can't happen. You can then have to pay attorney fees to the attorney of the person that filed it.
What I do, I think for the new ones, you've noticed this now, there are lots of times where I need to get information to the council. And you will see that I will put right on the top FYI. And lately, I've been saying, please don't respond. This is just for you, so that you have information, and we don't violate the Open Meeting Act. I'm letting you know, but the problem, if you start, you respond to me, you respond to me, you respond to me, and the fourth person responds to me, we've just had a rolling meeting.
And again, you could call him, and that's the other thing, and I'm glad you brought it up. You could have a rolling quorum by going through somebody. So four of you could call him, and now you have a rolling quorum, because you've gone through somebody else. It's very difficult not to have a rolling quorum, because there are times when you just want to talk about something. You can't, unless it's a, meeting is advertised and you talk about it in public. And as I said, if you're in violation, somebody, you know, and people like to, like, find fault. We've had, we've had OMAs in the school department. We've had OMAs a few years ago in the school department that I couldn't defend. You know, somebody decides, we're going to meet and we're going to interview somebody privately. You can't do that, you can't do it. The only thing you can talk as a group about is scheduling a meeting. So the town clerk or the administrator can send something out to you and say, you know, we've got to schedule a special meeting to discuss whatever. You can then all send back information as, I'm available on Monday, I'm not available on Tuesday. So to schedule a meeting, you can discuss it outside of a meeting, but that is the only time you can all respond. So just be careful.
Avoid the reply off.
Yeah, we just got, we just got hired in a district, and we've got like three OMAs that we have to, like, defend right away. You know, I mean, it's people don't get, it always happens when they may not, somebody's not happy with something you're doing, or they think you're doing, and you're going to get more and more of these violations. And really, you're now spending money to a solicitor to do work that it should have been prevented. We talked, a meeting, anytime there's a, you have more than three, anytime you have four people, it is a meeting. Email and telephone, we just talked about that. Again, you meet, if you are on the email, now, we don't, everybody uses emails now. You don't pick up a phone, you text. But again, if four of you are on something, you've got a rolling quorum. The only time you can do it is to schedule a meeting. All right, executive session. There are specific rules in the OMA, and you have that in your booklet, where you can have executive session. And in having an executive session, there are things like if you're discussing the purchase, or a contract, or negotiations, or the solicitor wants, I mean, the administrator wants to bring to you the job performance of somebody. Security now has been added. That's the new one that's been added to executive session. If you're discussing security in the town, you can do that in executive session. And that's been put in so that we sometimes put a lot of security measures in our towns, and in our schools, and in our buildings, and we don't want the public to know how we're going to have special security. Those things are all okay in executive session. But in order to go to executive session, again, you need to know the reason, you need to identify it on the agenda. What happens in executive session stays in executive session. And sometimes this is really hard, too. You go into executive session, you're discussing something, you've got to remember that you have a fiduciary duty to that body to remember that what you talk about in executive session can't be discussed with anyone outside of executive session. Try really hard. I know sometimes it is hard. Sometimes you're hearing something on a contract negotiation. Sometimes you're hearing something on a personnel matter. Sometimes you're hearing something on land acquisition. But you've got to remember, you've got to keep it confidential. It was put in executive session for a reason, it needs to stay confidential.
Can I just ask one question, just back to the OMA? So this has been a problem. That's true, actually, but anyway, the, it's an ongoing problem. So, you know, when we have our local political party meetings, committee meetings, Republican, Democrat, or whatever, and part of the meeting usually is public, appointed officials report to the committee what has been discussed. Not in executive session, obviously, but when does that violate the OMA? So I say, you know, we talked about doing a study to, you know, try to map out all the beach access routes around town. That's what we talked about. When does that, and then people in the committee start commenting on that. When does that violate the meeting?
So again, who's commenting? Other town council members, or people in the?
There will be, you know, right now, there will be, there will be, if everybody, for the, right now, for the Democratic Committee, every counselor attends the committee meeting, there will be, there will be a majority of the counselors in the room.
The other counselors shouldn't comment. One council person, one person can say, because remember, you're only talking about what's in public.
Right.
So, you know, at the last town council meeting, this is what we did.
Right.
As long as there's not interaction where the four of you are now discussing it, you're not violating the OMA. I caution you not to interact at that point, because I think it could be a violation.
Would it be best that you just appoint one counselor per meeting to just go over everything?
That certainly would be a good way to not violate the OMA. Yeah.
But it doesn't violate OMA if, you know, so like, Kevin gets up and says, we talked about X, Y, and Z. And then I say, oh, we also talked about A, but it stands a difference.
That's fine, but you got to, again, you know, and let me just tell you, some people get like crazy about the OMA. They think they can't go out to a play together, or they can't go to a concert together, or to a, you know, to a basketball. That's not a violation.
I can't go home.
If four of you go to a, go to a basketball game and happen to sit together, that is not a violation in the OMA unless you start talking about town business. So, I mean, you can be together at something, you can go to a party, somebody, you decide you're going to have a party, and all of you are going to go to a party. That's not a violation of the OMA unless all of you, or four of you, start talking about something that happened in a meeting that you now want to get involved in.
So we're going to the Clean Ocean Access Beach Cleanup over in Pheasant Drive, and Linda calls Danielle. and Linda calls Danielle and says, are you going?
No, not, no, because you're not, you're going, and, I mean, you're not, it's not a meeting, you're not sitting talking about it, you're going to do something good, you can go out together.
And to be clear, all seven of us could, could meet, we just can't talk about matters that would come before the council. We can talk about New England Patriots all day if we want to.
You could go to the game together, tomorrow, 1:00, it's gonna be cold.
It's in Miami.
No, it's in Miami, it's not gonna be cold.
Miami, Miami, take a chance on that.
Is that, is that in the budget, Rich?
No, tomorrow, we'll have to hold the door to Glenn for two hours.
It's probably very, um, difficult to get a ticket right now to get down there in time. Because isn't the storm, is the guy, yeah, so, anyway.
We can leave now.
So again, executive session, be careful. You know, anybody can sue anybody at any time, don't give them a reason. Okay, now, you can always have an emergency meeting, if there's a true emergency. We said it has to be posted 48 hours unless there's an extreme emergency, and then you can have. For example, let's say that you find out there's a pending, um, there's a pending hurricane coming, or a snowstorm, and you need to put certain, you need to have some decisions made that soliciting, I mean, the administrator, you can always call an emergency meeting, as long as it's a true emergency, and there's a steps you follow. Like, you have to post it as soon as you know, you have to post it on the doors, you have to state what the emergency is, and then when you come into the meeting, you have to actually vote that you're gonna have this emergency meeting. The last time I was involved in an emergency meeting, we found out at night that a union was gonna strike the next day. We needed, we needed the committee to come in and vote as to what we, how, were we gonna, what were we gonna do in terms of dealing with the strike. That was an emergency, we only found out about it the night before. But it has to be a true emergency. You know, you can't decide today you've got an emergency, because you heard something's gonna happen in two weeks. That's not an emergency. It's gotta be like a pending, quick thing that needs to, that the administrator, administrator needs direction on. You can also, let me just one thing, you can also, as a town council, you can amend your agenda on the floor if some topic comes up, and you can amend it just for discussion. Again, I would do that sparingly, you know, because there's always gonna be the perception that you're trying to pull something on the public. So even though you as a town council have that right, you need to understand that I wouldn't do it on a regular basis. Open forum and public comments, I understand you don't right now have open forum on your, on your, um, agenda. So that's different than a public comment. And again, you have a right, you have a right to have it on your agenda, you have a right not to have it on your agenda. There's no law that says you have to allow public comments. However, obviously, you are elected by the public to do the public's work. You, you don't want to cause the public not to be involved. So you, you know, like, it, there are some meetings where you may never have a public comment. It might be something you need to go in and get done, and, but then if you don't have public comments, you're gonna get criticized. So sometimes it's better to put it there, and half the time, you don't get a lot of comments anyway, but, you know, put it there. And again, what I understand is, um, your public comments are limited to agenda items right now. So that's fine, it's already on the agenda. So if it's already on the agenda, then you can respond, because it's an item on the agenda. If you ever go to open forum, where somebody gets up and wants to talk about something that's not on the agenda, you can't respond, because it's not on the agenda, unless you add that to your agenda, and then you can have it for discussion. And again, I understand that you're working on a policy or protocol, you may add stuff. Kevin did tell me that you're allowed, you do allow the public to speak after you discuss. And then, all I, all I'm gonna say to you is, you've got to be consistent. Do you wanna add anything to that, Kevin, or is that you?
As we were talking, would it be good practice to kind of establish that guideline for each meeting? So that if there's gonna be issues on the agenda, some might be very straightforward, some might be a little more controversial, where you might have a, a crowd that wants to get up and speak. Right at the beginning of the meeting, should, should we just state kind of the, the rules for the meeting? Because if, if we get through four or five small items, and someone gets up and speaks for five minutes, then we get to a controversial item, and I say, hey, I wanna limit the discussion to two or three minutes, I'm not really being consistent.
I would, I would say, if something like that, where there's gonna be a very inconsistently, I would put that under your president's comments right at the beginning regarding the public comments. And again, you know what the controversial items are gonna be on your agenda. You know what you're gonna fill the room with that's gonna speak. And, and you know the pulse of, I mean, I don't know the pulse of your community. So you know, like, you know, let, let, let's, let's get, let's clear this up, let's let you speak, but please limit your comments to two minutes. Because again, if you have 40 people, you're gonna be there all night.
Right, sure.
And you're never gonna get anything done. So again, if you can come up with that, that, that's a good procedure to follow.
So I have a question, this is actually for our town clerk. An element of our agendas that weren't present when I last served, on substantive items, so a point, you know, correspondence and whatnot, no, but I'm looking at, for example, the agenda on this coming Monday. For every agenda item, there's a number in parentheses, 5, 15, 10, are those estimated timeframes?
They are.
That's what I thought they were.
Guesstimate.
It's a guesstimate, yeah.
Yeah, actually, and I think, okay, that's just good to know.
It's more of a planning feature, so that, sure, in the present-
We can know if you're joining into a five-hour meeting or a half-hour meeting, yeah.
I wanna go one, over one more thing when it comes to agendas. Consent agenda. Everybody has, everybody I know has a consent agenda right now. And that basically is routine items that have been put on the agenda that shouldn't need any debate, discussion whatsoever. Like, if you have 10 items under your consent, somebody makes a motion to approve the consent agenda. That piece is done without discussion, without debate, and is either voted, is voted. On the other hand, if there's something under consent agenda that you want to discuss, then you remove that from the consent agenda. So for example, if there's 10 items under consent, appointment of personnel, bills, whatever you have under your consent, you wanna remove one, then somebody makes a motion, I'm going to vote, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the consent agenda, except for number five, I want that removed for discussion. Then you vote on numbers one to four, six to 10, and then you come back and you have a discussion of that item. But consent agenda should get you through a lot of the routine matters without wasting a lot of the time of, of the committee. But if there is something that needs discussion, you remove it from consent. Lynn?
So it would be my practice, and I don't know if this is required, but it would be my practice that if I wanted to remove something from the consent agenda for our discussion in action separately, I would look at it as, this was noticed at the Secretary of State's website, as a consent agenda item, so the public may not be anticipating discussion and separate action. I would rather, I would feel less comfortable dealing with it at that meeting, rather than say that I put it in the consent agenda and have it placed on our next meeting. Is that required?
No, you can pull it and discuss it, right, it, it gets moved, that's all, you can move it, yes.
You could deal with it in consent agenda, I might have to say, maybe.
Yes. And they're mostly, mostly they're routine things. They're not, um, you know, you might not, you may have a question on a bill, or you might have a question on, you wanna give somebody, there's a, somebody getting appointed, or somebody retiring, and you wanna pull it, because you wanna discuss the fact that they've been a great employee, and you wanna, you know, vote it separate and thank them for their service. Because remember, consent is just done, one motion, you consent, it's done. Kevin?
And I'm gonna throw a line, so there's some folks here who can help me out on this. We had a discussion at a previous meeting about putting some items on the consent agenda, and there was a question about, from a public standpoint, if there was a question of an item on a consent agenda, does the pub, if you put it on consent and it gets voted, and then the public doesn't have an opportunity to speak on that item. We had talked about, and I forget what the issue was, does anybody remember what that issue was?
If, oh, regarding the liquor, uh, not liquor, but the other licenses that were renewals, annuals.
So if there was a, there was an issue that was a concern from a public standpoint, we had said, well, we could ask prior to taking the vote on the consent agenda, if there was any concerns from the public, because right now, they have a chance to speak, because it's not a consent agenda.
I think if there was gonna be somebody, that you'd have to remove it from the consent agenda, because consent agenda does not have debate or discussion, even by the-
No, but if, my question would be, how does the, if the public has a concern, they need to be notified prior to us voting on the consent agenda, if there's a concern about a specific item.
Should they be telling somebody individually that's a concern, like Kevin, should, you know that, and you say, I'm gonna remove number six from the consent agenda, because we're gonna discuss it?
It, I think it's, it's, it's a little bit more intertwined there. I think the goal was to try and just, instead of the clerk reading through all 1,500 licenses.
Yeah.
If somebody, if, if Rich owns a business, and he now has a holiday, he wants to go for a holiday license, and that's under the renewals.
Yeah.
Can Joe Public stand up and say, hey, I don't, I'm a neighbor of his, and I don't want him open on Sundays?
Not if it's on the consent agenda, you can't, you have to remove it for that discussion.
Right, right, but if a public person can ask for it to be removed and discussed.
Well, they can ask you to remove it, and then one of you would have to remove it, not a pu, like, somebody, I wanted to-
But they would have to do it before our meeting, right?
Yes, yeah.
So they can't stand up in the middle of the session and say, I object to bill-
No, no.
But they, they again have the list of what's on the consent agenda, so they have time to contact the president and say, I have questions on this, can you please?
Yes. Yeah.
I just think if we, if we go that route, that the public has to know that there's a mechanism for them to address an item on the consent agenda, because some people may or may not know that if I want something on that consent agenda addressed, I gotta reach out to one of my counselors.
All right, but let me ask you a question, for these renewals of licenses, aren't there hearings on them first?
That's for liquor.
So this is virtual?
This is virtual, um, public licenses, maybe like that.
Because remember, you usually have a hearing in the, yeah.
So we just, I mean, we had this debate at one of the pri, at a prior meeting, and one of the thoughts was, well, if it goes on the consent agenda, that we would put, we would give them, they'd still have an ability to say something prior to that, so we would have to know.
They need to let you know, and one of you needs to pull it.
We just have to make sure the- Even if we make that part of our parliamentary procedures that, and Tom's the only one here, he's a private citizen right now, and Myers over there, but he's supporting the camera, but if Tom got up, if Tom got up and said, hey, I wanna, I wanna pull this, if we made it as part of our procedures, that it's okay, or are you just saying this is against the rules?
If it's part of your procedures, that's fine, but then you're, then you're almost defeating the whole purpose of the consent agenda.
Yeah.
You know, the consent agenda is to get through routine items without a lot of discussion and debate, so you can get to the old business, new business, and things that you do wanna debate. So my concern is, if you start doing that, what if this, you know, if you wanna pull everything off the consent agenda, there's no point in having a consent agenda.
I'm just trying to, I, when the discussion came up, our comment was, well, we need to look into this, and I don't even know if we amended the motion, but we did, we did say we would look into it, because if there was a concern raised by a citizen, and they did not have an opportunity to get in touch with one of us, or they noticed it on Sunday, and-
Aren't they gonna show up at the meeting that night if they wanna talk about it?
But if it's on the consent agenda, they've got no shot.
No, but if they show up and they say to you, or somebody, hey, I got a question, I want this item on the consent agenda to be removed, won't they tell one of you? I mean, are they gonna just show up and not tell anybody, or are they gonna try to?
That, that could happen, where the consent agenda's there, and they get up and say, hey, I wanna talk about-
And then one of you removes it.
Right, so that, so that's the question, so, but it, it, they can do that in the process of the consent approval. Just, and it's not something that's gonna happen a lot, right? It's gonna be very-
Right.
I'm just, I don't wanna backpedal on something that we already put out there, that's all.
Basically, what, what it was is, if there was something somebody had prior to any discussion of that we're coming up to the consent agenda, is, does anybody have a, a question regarding one of the items?
That's fine, that's all. I mean, it's, again, it's, there's no law that you have to have consent, you know, there's, that consent is to try to streamline your meetings, so if you wanna pull something, that's fine.
Is it, is once you pull it, does it turn into a discussion slash action item?
Yes. Yes.
And it can happen that very same meeting?
Yes.
Is it old business, or new business, or just run after it?
It goes to old business.
So does this have to be made a formal amendment of our procedures in regards to do this?
No.
You've already, you've already done that.
Yeah, we've already, I just wanna kind of close the loop here.
So, in some, in some places, when something's removed from consent, what normally happens is they vote the consent agenda, and then they turn around and they explain why they removed it from consent, and they deal it with it right then and there.
Right.
Your, your own school committee, what they do when they remove something from consent is they put it to old business, and then it gets taken up as the last action of old business. That's how this, your school committee in Portsmouth deals with it.
Which one is a preferable?
Whatever makes you, you know, it really isn't. It was hard for me to get used to how Portsmouth School Committee does it, because I was always used to, you vote the consent agenda, and then you pull something. For example, let's say you have minutes under consent agenda, and one of you wasn't at that meeting. Well, you can't vote for the whole consent agenda, because you can't approve the minutes of a meeting that you were not at. So everything gets done, and then you may even be the one, I make a motion to approve, and then you, you, um, you don't vote on it, you abstain, because you weren't at the meeting.
We have the minutes in a separate-
Yeah, but I mean, what I'm saying, you know what I'm saying, like, that is on somebody's consent agenda. You know, there's a personnel, and again, this happens a lot, somebody under personnel, you wanna, they're retiring, you wanna like talk about what a great employee they were, well, you can't discuss it if it's under consent, so you remove that item, and then I make a motion to accept the resignation or the retirement. I wanna say, he's been a wonderful employee of the town of Portsmouth the past 15 years, we're sorry to see him go, we wish him the best. You know, like, you really can't make those comments under consent, because there's no discussion under consent, things like that. You know, and then, on the other hand, if there's a license coming up that you know is gonna be controversial, don't put it into consent anyway, put it under old business to start out. Consent should really be the items that you think aren't gonna have a lot of issues.
So, Councilmember Linda, who's just mentioned a phrase that is also newer, I think, than since I last served, and that is every agenda item I've seen is preface with discussion slash action. And I understand that that purpose of that is to make clear that under the Open Meetings Act, we are announcing that this is something that we can both talk about and take a vote on. But if my topic is, you know, agenda item X, Y, Z, and we just eliminated the words discussion slash action and just listed it on the agenda as topic X, Y, Z, isn't that open-ended enough?
Okay, so here's, here's the-
The public should know we're gonna talk about it and talk about it.
Okay, so that's why you might wanna decide whether you want discussion. If you have, under old business, discussion slash action, that means that everything under old business can be discussed and then acted on. But let's say under new business, you only put discussion, you can't act on those. So it's not even necessary, it's like the whole agenda can be discussed slash action. You almost may not want to, on some things, put discussion slash action, because if you forget it on other topics, you're not gonna vote on it that night.
So you're saying we can have an entire agenda, that everything is considered discussion slash action?
Sure.
Except for the, uh-
Consent.
Consent.
Like, what things don't you have action on them?
Typically, it's consent and correspondence.
All right, all right, so let's stop for a second, you're not gonna vote on correspondence anyway.
Right, but we have, what, what we've done in the past is, we have the correspondence, and somebody sees something on there, a CRMC thing, that they wanna pull off. Do the same thing, you're talking about a consent. I wanna receive and place on file items one through five, but item six, I wanna pull off for the next meeting.
To discuss and possibly act on what they're saying?
In, at the following meeting, so.
So I don't even understand why you would be doing anything, I mean, if you get correspondence, you're just receiving that correspondence, correct? So if one of those, you're receiving the correspondence, but if one of those car, um, letters brings up an item that you think needs to be discussed and acted on, aren't you just putting that on the next agenda?
Yes, but if, if a council member makes a motion to receive and place on file items one through five, and I wanna pull off six for the next agenda, for discussion and action, and it goes under old places.
Yeah, I mean, even if you, even if you accept it in file, you can still put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, don't you still have to accept it and put it on file as correspondence?
Yeah, like, I don't understand why you would even do that. I mean, you could accept and file, you're, I mean, you accept and file correspondence, and then at a later date, somebody says, you know that correspondence is number seven, I wanna, I want that topic on the next agenda, I don't know that you even have to take that step. Because you could, oh, remember, you as a council, you could almost put something on the agenda. So three months from now, you remember the letter you got about something, you wanna bring that up. And again, I, some of these little procedures that you, as a council, follow in Portsmouth that are specific to you, your solicitor should be giving you the information and the advice as to how he wants you to handle it. as to how he wants you to handle it. This, because there's nothing you're telling me that you're doing wrong. You know, it's, it's kinda like what's gonna be our policy, what's gonna be our procedure?
So technically, we could just put the correspondence under consent and just have it all there?
Absolutely, because then you're not even, you're not going to do anything with car, you are not going to discuss and or act on correspondence because you don't know what's in those, those, those items. So you're not openly telling the public what you're going to discuss. You're just saying, we got this correspondence and we're gonna accept it and then if somebody wants to talk about it at the next meeting, you put it on, um, as a correspondence. But again, for these specific things, you need to, you should really ask your own solicitor how you should be handling that.
So except for correspondence and the consent agenda, every item on the agenda can be discussion slash action? That's a possibility?
I can't think of anything else that would not be-
Right, so do we, in order to make that clear, do I, do I have to make a motion? Or does this have to pass with the approval of the whole town council? Or is this just?
What is, what does not have discussion slash action?
We have had items that are put on only as discussion, including what's going to be discussed later in today's session, which are not, I thought were going to be discussion slash action, but were actually only put on as discussion.
We have a town administrator's report with Rich's updates on five or six things or ten things that happened. So there's no discussion, we sometimes have discussion on that, but we don't typically take action on things like those. It's just you ask a question back, you know, update at the police station, kind of thing.
So she's talking about like alleged-
Today's discussion is about his goals, which we may want to-
But what Linda's asking is if we put discussion and action on everything under the agenda, I mean, that's, that's an item that is not under old business, new business.
See, what I, what I would say is that in the absence of the text discussion slash action, just for example, town administrator's report, we could take action, now maybe town administrator's report is a bad example because if the town administrator could say, here's something you've never heard of before, let's tell us about it and that would probably be appropriate for us to act on.
But any, anything you're discussing today, you can then put it on your next agenda.
We could always do that.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, my preference would be to eliminate discussion slash action and just list agenda items. That way, it's implied we can discuss and act and we don't have to think in advance, do I want this discussion only or action only?
Right.
What if you forget the word, the word discussion, you just put action? That means you can't have a debate, you can only vote? I mean, it, just to me, it seems-
Or do you want to put like old business and then discussion action next to old business?
Yes, cover everything.
Yeah, catch all plugs, I like that.
Yes, that's the way I see it on most agendas. That's why I can't, that's why I'm having a hard time wrapping around what you're telling me is not-
Yeah, maybe we should do it now.
Yeah, that way it catches everything, I think.
And new business.
Yeah, but then it's like old business and, thank you.
So, yeah, that's, again, that's the better way to do it? All right, here's something that-
One, one last, really, really quick before, I know you better wrap up. Uh, just before the topic of open meetings-
Listen, you only gave me an hour and a half. In fact, somebody told me I'm, they were throwing me out as an hour and we're almost hitting that hour and a half, so.
I just wanna mention to everyone here, um, on the topic of open, open meetings act, the Rhode Island Attorney General's office holds what they call an open government summit every year, usually in the summer time.
It's in the end of July, August.
Yeah, it's really valuable to go, it's free, it's, they also cover the open meet, the, uh, Act of the Record.
They also do it in January, uh, usually it's C R A.
Yeah, I don't see it on the website yet, but we're in a change of video.
It might be a loop down the name of the Hessenfeld thing.
Yeah, but it's real, it's really worthwhile going to.
And if you're attorney, you get, um, two or three free credits.
Yeah, three, three. Ethics credits, I'm sure.
I just figured I'd ask that. We all go, you know, we all go out and then we go out to lunch afterwards.
Do you get enough credits? Does that make you an attorney?
If you don't, wait a minute, seriously, if you don't get enough credits and you don't submit them on time, when you go on the directory for attorneys under the Bar Association, they take your name right off.
Yeah, you're gonna lose your-
You lose your license, you actually lose your license until you show that you've, um, you could lose your license until you verify that you've got the credits in. So, I mean, I've seen attorneys all of a sudden have-
We deal with that too.
What, please?
I deal with that.
Yeah, the doc, right, right, so, okay, so let's talk about ethics. This not only is under statute, it is under the Constitution that we are going to be ethical, okay?
She's a general secretary.
It's true, it's the truth.
Um, be careful, I was a state rep for three years. It's required under the Constitution, it's required under the general laws of Rhode Island. I was trying to find some material to put in the binder on ethics and I actually printed a hundred and eight pages. I kinda consolidated and just gave you an overview in your binder. A couple of things that you need to know, um, if you're voting on something that affects somebody that you're related to or live with, you can't vote on that item. So you have to recuse yourself and in your binder, I gave you the form that you need to fill out if you have to recuse yourself.
They're in their drawers.
Okay, the form means, let's say for example, your wife, your sister, your mother, your son, your cousin, your aunt, your uncle, your roommate is going to get appointed to some position in the town, you need to recuse yourself.
And I think the important thing is you gotta do it before discussing it. You gotta say, I'm out and I'm not gonna discuss and I'm gonna get myself up off my chair and go outside.
What I see, or even sit in the public, you can sit in the public, but you can't, you can't be in executive session over that. Um, you can't sit at the council table. So what I always tell my, the people, because they always come up to me and say, what am I doing? What I will do is say, go sit in the audience and fill out this form. You have the responsibility of mailing this form to the ethics board. Now, a lot of my clients give it to me and I do, I do mail it in, but if I, if I mess up and I don't mail it, I'm not the one that's in trouble, you are. So you're, you have the responsibility.
We actually, the clerk's office sends them in and then we keep it on file.
But as long as I would owe, and not, not that you're not efficient, if I, if I had to fill one of these out, I make sure it gets sent in. So, I'm sorry.
What we usually do is we make the, make a copy of it, we make the letter, um, we hold it on file, but we can also give them a copy saying we've sent it.
I would wanna, I mean, I, I, I don't know about you, but I would wanna make sure it got mailed in. And I've had to fill these out a few times, um, even professionally, where somebody in my firm was getting some work where I sat on a board and I had to recuse myself. The other thing that if you haven't already done and you probably have, you're going to need, and, and it tells you everything you need to do. So I put the form and I put the in, information. The other thing is you're going to have to fill out the yearly financial statement. I hate doing the yearly financial statement. You've gotta put down everything, if you forget something, like if you forget something and nobody's after you, nothing's gonna happen. But if you forget something and you are, for some reason, somebody's checking on you, you can get fined, you can get jailed, you can get whatever, okay? Now, the easy thing about the financial statement now is it's online. So once you've done it one time, as long as you have your number, you can bring it up and just make changes and submit it electronically. It's made it so easy in the last few years that it's online. But you need, this is all, if you had to do one, you had to do one on-
Table sometimes, something like that.
If some of you may have already, they may be sending one out to the new people right now, but then this is due like around April twenty first. They do give you a few grace days, but I know somebody, I mean, I sat with a young lady who got fined five hundred dollars because she didn't send hers in. So I, when you get that envelope in the mail, just take care of it right away.
And they're super nice, I mean, if you have any questions, you can just call the Ethics Commission and say, do I need to disclose this or how do I disclose that? Or that's very helpful, they're more than you're, I just want you to disclose.
The other thing is, um, if you think you have an ethics concern, you could always call them and ask for a decision.
That's right, that's right.
So let me give you an example. My, um, a friend of mine who is a teacher in our regional district got elected to the town council because the charter allowed it. He actually sent a letter to the ethics board and asked for an opinion as to can he vote on the, the school budget? You know, what can he vote on having to do with schools, what he can't? And they'll give you an ethics opinion and then you have it. Um, sometimes you'll have people who have, you know, relatives that work in the town or you're on the school committee and you have relatives who, can you be part of negotiating a, a contract? What is your role, what's your obligation, what are you allowed to do? It's always very, in your best interest, if you think there's an issue, ask for an opinion. Um, I actually had to call and ask for an opinion on something and when I called, they said to me, if you're calling and asking, what do you think? You know, like I'm a lawyer, I'm asking opinion. I'm like, all right, I gotta, I've got a, you know, issue here. So ask, don't be afraid to ask. You're always better to ask than to think you're okay and then come up with an ethics violation. Again, good advice.
This is not the Catholic attitude. This is not a situation where it's easy to ask for forgiveness information.
No, it's, you're right, so.
Okay, I have a question then.
Yep.
I mean, we appoint everybody to our town boards and committees. We're gonna be appointing school committee people. Do we recruit ourselves if it's, if you're related to the person or if you know them? I mean, it's a small town.
No, not know them, not know them, you're fine.
Just related to.
When, one of the things they tell you when you go to that August thing is if you can marry the per, if you can't marry the person- All right, if you can't marry the person, you have enough, you have, you have to recuse yourself.
Okay, all right.
Okay? That's how she explained it at one of the, the lawyers from the, and I'm thinking, okay, we can't marry the person.
That makes it easier, I don't have any, any answers.
Like you can't marry your grandma, you can't ma, you know, your, your son, you're doing what?
Which culture?
Which state?
That's how, you know, again, it's a relative. If you're, anyway, they're gonna benefit from something that you're gonna do.
All right, go.
But a friend, no, unless the friend lives with you, because if it's in your household, then you have a, you have a violation.
Or if you've got a financial gain, you know, your business partner.
Yes, right, exactly. And again, I had, I had to recuse myself because one of my partners, you know, I couldn't take part in that vote. Um, you're, you're subject to the ethics because you are now an elected official. And like, um, you're, you're subject to the ethics too, as it, as in, and you're subject to every, you know-
You just got the, the folder for that.
Yep, yeah, so, um, you're all subject. And again, we just talked about this, if it's nepotism, if it's a friend, you know, it's somebody you are going, somebody you can't marry, you can't make a decision on that person. Gifts, did you know you couldn't accept a gift for more than twenty-five dollars?
Yes.
I'm like, I just found out about last year about a gift.
A maximum of seventy-five a year.
Yeah, for the year, but you can't get a gift for more than twenty-five dollars.
From who?
From anybody, any constituent.
Anybody giving you a gift as a, a town council, like you did such a great job, great job, here's a gift.
Oh, okay, yeah, but like my friend can give me a birthday gift.
Oh, wow, yeah.
A constituent, every day if you-
No, a friend can give you a gift, but if they give that, this is the, this is the little, if they're giving you the gift, as long as they're not giving it to you because you're such a great town councilor, then you can get it from a friend.
So they can't take you out to a thirty-dollar lunch because you're doing such a great job on the council?
Yeah. Okay, I think we've completed my slides. Are there any other questions I can-
Wait a minute, you skipped one with the, with the group.
No, that, we already talked about that. My script meeting. I gotta tell you, my administrative assistant did this PowerPoint. All I gave her, I give an outline and say, I need this, these comments, and she went in and found all the pictures and, um, I thought she did a really great job.
If we only have discussion, listen, can we still take a, a vote, that's an unofficial vote? Like get a consensus?
You should not. If all you have is discussion, you should not take a vote. That's why I want you to be really careful not to just put discussion. I like the way you're gonna do it just for the whole thing.
But even if it's, even if it's to just get a consensus, can you ask for a consensus?
A consensus is a vote.
That's a vote.
Okay.
All right, and one more thing, remember, when you do anything in executive session, if you vote, then you have to always discuss, you have to tell what that, you put that vote out, unless it's something like negotiations that are ongoing or some type of litigation is ongoing and then you can hold off on that vote. Do, any other questions I can answer for you? Anything I didn't cover, Rick, that you think I needed to, other than to say how many times they could fire you, but?
I, I, I think you beat the, the horse.
To be clear, we can only fire him once.
Right, and, and all, and I guess, I need you to understand that, you know, he's the CEO of the town.
Yeah.
He's the CEO, so.
For me, the biggest thing is if you have any kind of question as to whether or not you're gonna step in, I listened to Jason four or five times. Jason Gravett is, he lives here in town.
Yeah.
He talks about a football field. If you get between, if you're from the forty into the goal line on either side, you're okay. But when you get to the forty to forty and you're kinda in that gray area, get an opinion.
Absolutely.
And, and get an opinion directly from the Ethics Commission. Don't, I mean, you can ask the solicitor and he may give you an idea, but if you're in a gray area, go to the Ethics Commission and don't, don't ask the-
I wouldn't think an opinion insulates you from charges.
I would never give an opinion to any body that I serve on an ethics violation.
Kevin generally won't either.
I would give you an opinion as to whether something can and can't be done, but in terms of an ethics opinion, whether I think you have an ethics violation, uh-uh, because I don't wanna be in a position where I tell you you can do something and you really can't. It's gotta be official and we are not official bearers of what's ethical and what isn't.
If there's any thought in your head that it's getting to that gray area, pick up the phone and call the Ethics Commission.
Are they quick?
Um, written opinions, sometimes you even have to go down there, but, um, before you get involved, give them, they definitely give you, give them a call.
I mean, we certainly have time between when the agenda comes out before our next meeting.
Well, they'll give you like, they'll give you a verbal, but if you want, no. They may give you a verbal, but you want it written, it takes a while. I would not, until you get that opinion, I wouldn't vote on something.
Because they will, they will sometimes ask for documentation from my office, from the town administrator, from whomever to research before they give you an opinion.
Oh, so if something's on the agenda and you're not sure, are you better off just recusing yourself?
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Or, or if you feel it's an important matter that deserves your attention and, and there's a reasonable chance that you'll be cleared by the Ethics Commission for it, might suggest to the clerk and, and the administrator, can we move this to the next meeting? We're happy to give you time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Usually, that's right.
Yeah.
Everybody's coffee just kicked in.
The next, next item on our agenda is gonna be our town administrator goals. Mr. Hannah?
Now, I did forward to you, uh, town administrator goals, priorities and initiatives. And the way this is broken down, this is something that we started, Steph and I, literally right after I got here. And I know that, uh, Hannah has bought into the whole idea of a strategic vision. And the way strategy works, it starts very high level. You have vision, uh, your mission, uh, your goals, your policies, and then you're executable. So your action items would support the policies. So that's the way it's broken down. I realize there's a lot there. A lot of what is in there is stuff that has to be done, some of it is, uh, some are the act, some action items are things that we have decided on over the last year, two years, three years that are still ongoing. To make it a little easier for you, I handed out, uh, what I thought are the top priorities, top action items, uh, in a single sheet. So did they, did you all get this?
Yeah.
Okay. And those are the things, uh, in working with staff, uh, that I think are the top priorities to be done, uh, over the next year or your term. Uh, and obviously this gets updated. I try to get this before the council every year. I also wanted, and it, and in there are the big ticket items. Obviously, the police building, uh, the collective bargaining agreements with the fire and P M E A, um, comp plan, and then the follow-on work after the comp plan gets approved, the updating of the zoning ordinances, uh, and then, uh, our, uh, capital improvement plan and folding in the Jacobs Report, uh, which you'll be getting here soon, uh, into our long-term capital improvement plan. So as we mull that over, I also wanted to, uh, I wanted to highlight some things to you and I wanna preface this discussion as I am not complaining, I am more inadequately staffed, as I am not complaining, I am more inadequately staffed, I can do the work, but I wanted to highlight to the council, what the lay of the land is, because I think over the last couple of years, uh, we have forgotten that. So I passed out this little kind of brochure I put together. And it's, this is just stuff that I put together last night, and it wasn't hard for me to put this together. Uh, so there's a lot that goes on that isn't even encapsulated here, but just to give you an idea, I've been here for eight-hundred-and-sixty-two days, workdays, in that time, uh, over thirty-six thousand emails. That's an average of forty-two emails a day over the last three years. That has climbed the longer I've been in, been here. So if I just do the average for the last year, it's sixty emails a day. I average thirteen calls per day on my work phone, my work cellphone. I average over thirty-two calls per day on the office phone, and Barbara handles most of that. On average, I get four non-staff unscheduled office visits per day. These are constituents, residents, um, people in town that I have to talk to. Meetings, I average ten-point-four scheduled meetings per week, and an average of about seven-point-eight hours per week. That's one whole workday, just meetings. Tasks. I attached, just in chronological order, above and beyond what I'm required to do by the charter, and above and beyond normal staff work, and things that come up from outside agencies. For instance, you'll get a muscle dead shoulders road, uh, you know, hadn't even got to you yet. Um, these things that I have to work on. So there's about a hundred-and-thirty-nine tasks that have been given to me, uh, to work on in this time. And then, the last thing I attached there, uh, just to kind of put a bow on it, much of what gets tasked to the town administrator or to the staff, if it doesn't fall neatly into Fire, Police, Public Works, Finance, uh, there's, there's very limited staff that can work on this. And I've highlighted, uh, in here, uh, you know, it goes to Town Hall, who works in Town Hall. Uh, we have a very, uh, active union in Town Hall, uh, so generally, if it's not in the job description uh, or if it's not in their work, uh, assignment, you know, their, their, their lane, uh, it goes to a non-union group. And generally, that's the town administrator, Barbara, Rich Tuliski, who's a part-time employee, and Gary Crosby, the town planner. So all I would ask is that you take, just take a look at this, and take a look at what, um, uh, what I've highlighted as the top priority projects. And when you're tasking staff to do something, be cognizant of the fact that, uh, it's, it's another straw on the camel's back. There is a lot going on, we're getting it done. What I didn't give to you was a list of all the projects that we have completed. The, the list of projects that we have completed is as robust, uh, as what you have here in front of you today. So we're more than capable of getting the job done. But as was put out today by Mary Ann Carroll, um, all I would ask is that, think about what it is you want me to do when you task me to do something. Uh, there was a motion made, I forgot, uh, what it was in the last meeting, and the question came from Mr. Kelly, how soon can you get this done? I, when I laugh, I'm not laughing at you. I don't know, it's just like when you ask the solicitor, you gotta give me some time to, to study it. And, and I will get to it, and I will answer, I will, the project will get done. But it would help if you would prioritize what you want done. What tends to happen is every year, I kinda tell you, okay, here's what I think needs to be done, and then you agree. And then you get rolling on in your business as a council, and my impression is that we sometimes forget, okay, we have these, these lists of things that need to be done, that, that's been tasked to, to me and staff, and then you just add to it. Well, you know, you voted that these are important things that have to be done, some of them, I just have to get done. The comp plan, the, the budget, the capital improvement plan, uh, contract negotiations. So it's, it, again, it's another thing that has to be tended to with very limited staff, uh, so I would ask that you just keep that in mind as we go. That's all.
Mr. President, may I make a comment? I, I think it's important for us to understand that when the charter was established, that put together our comp form, population was half, roughly, maybe, not as much as it is now. And while certain employee bases have expanded to manage the population, such as Police, Fire, Town Hall staff generally is not. So we're expecting a lot.
Comment noted, and, and I think that's something that we probably see, um, trending. Having this type of information, I think, is, is very helpful to kind of calibrate things, things in perspective. Uh, we do ask a lot, um, you have a lot on your plate.
To give you a little vignette, I, I asked Barbara, you know, we've gone to, you know, everything's technical now, you heard the comment today, everything's done via email. So I asked her, pull the correspondence for a year that Driscoll had to deal with, and fit into a folder. I do that in a day.
And, well, another thing that I think we also need to kind of keep in mind, um, and, you know, Rich has been here for a few years, and things have been, they get in my mind, are trending upward. But as we get into the budget cycle again, we're looking at yet another new finance team that you're gonna have to coach along, and at their, you know, I'm not taking anything away from them, but they have not done a budget for the town of Portsmouth, so this is a situation where you're gonna have to, again, spend a little extra time coaching them along, and that's gonna also detract a little bit from some of these other items, and I think, I think the budget is definitely a priority for all of us in this room. So, you know, we've been making good progress with it, um, so I think that's something that we also need to take in consideration as we start to approach the budget season. He does have a, a, a new team over in Finance that, you know, that they're gonna need some extra coaching along the way just to make sure we don't miss something that we've done previously, that we keep making sure the information is there. We've implemented things over the years where we said, hey, let's make sure we add this in as a line item in the budget. Those are the kind of things we, we don't wanna lose sight of. That was just my thoughts, just high level, but if anyone else, you know, wants to jump in, feel free.
I just wanna say that I think that the purpose of this meeting is to take care of a task that any organization really has to do, which is to state our priorities. I think it really helps, you know, we're always asking for transparency of our government. Perhaps the most transparency we can possibly accomplish is to tell the people what we would like the town administrator to accomplish over the next, actually, it's going to be six months. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. President, but, um, we are supposed to, under statute review, uh, review Mr. Rayner in July of, um.
Sixty, sixty days.
Sixty, in sixty days. So let's say it's typically, should be around July, and so whatever priorities we would approve for him to execute is actually only a six-month plan, and we could adjust these because we haven't formally done this exercise before. But I would just like to be able to leave this meeting so that, um, we can really direct Mr. Rayner as to what we would like him to focus on, so that when we do his review, we can also say, you know, grade him, or guide him to, to accomplishing those things we need, we want him to accomplish. So, um, I hope, maybe the way to go forward is to have Mr. Rayner, I mean, if everything on this list is a priority, nothing's a priority, right? So I feel like we do need to narrow this, and so pass this arena to talk to us about how we can narrow the focus a bit, so we're not having you, you know, work on everything.
Can I make a comment?
Sure. I'm done, that's my turn.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at this list, and without getting into the nitty-gritty of everything, I mean, that's a lot for one person to accomplish in a year. So if we take a step back and look at our purpose to formulate, quote-unquote, a strategic plan for our town administrator to follow, I think we need at most like four or five big-ticket, like, big-picture issues that he needs to focus on, and some of these smaller tasks fit within that. And then Rich, you should have the ability to delegate those smaller tasks. And then I look at this TA statistics thing, going back to your role as, quote-unquote, CEO of the town. I mean, you walk into any company, and you're not gonna be able to just walk into the office and have an unscheduled meeting. Um, is it unreasonable to request that people schedule a time to have a meeting with you so that you can at least plan your, your schedule for the week?
It's, uh, you know, I walk a fine line. Uh, obviously, I ask people to schedule meetings with me. When somebody's upset about the transfer station, that's not the time to sit there and tell them, will you please come back later after you've scheduled a meeting with Barbara? Because the next call is gonna be to you.
Directly now.
Yeah, but maybe the call should be to me, and then I should schedule a meeting to sit down.
People don't work that way, though.
This is a small town, this isn't General Motors. And I'm not disagreeing with you, I think we manage it pretty well, and, and again, I emphasize, this wasn't to tell you I'm overburdened, this was to give you a glimpse into what my life is like. Uh, and I think we manage it pretty well. It's, and I, and I totally get, uh, the point, uh, this is the next downlist. And I think this is, and I'll, I'll look at it again, I think much, much of this, uh, will be accomplished in the next six months. And as far as delegation goes, yes, we delegate as much as we possibly can, but many of the, a, a lot of it is a team effort. But to your specific point about scheduling, um, a lot of it is scheduled, but it's, it's a small town. Town Hall is open, it belongs to the people. I can't control, uh, logistically or even ethically, who walks into Town Hall. And there's no glass door between the second floor and the first floor. I didn't grow up here, I, I get it. Uh, but the people, uh, in a small town demand access to, uh, their local officials. And I, I don't think, I, I think I do a pretty good job in managing that. But I don't wanna put any more restriction on that than what may already exist. So I, what I do, you know, if I know that something is gonna take an inordinate amount of my time, once I've let the person vent, or at least tell me what it is they wanna talk to me about, then I, I can reach a point where let's schedule this at another time, uh, so that I can look into the issue, much as what Mary Ann said, let me get back to you. You know, that's a pretty powerful statement, but I don't, you can't say that right away.
Maybe that only makes sense, you have to manage your own workload, and a lot of the times when you put things off, the amount of work that's associated with that particular issue actually, snowballs.
Well, yes and no, right? Because I think this is part of growing pains, from going to six, from six thousand residents to eighteen thousand residents, because I guarantee you that in New York City, a resident that's upset about their trash pickup is not gonna barge into the mayor's office and get a, a fifteen-minute meeting on demand. So, it's, I don't think it's unreasonable to, to manage, schedule so that Rich can prioritize the business of the town versus individual people's requests.
I think Rich is gonna have to decide.
We, we, we can't legislate that. That has to be Rich coming back and saying, hey.
Absolutely.
And, and he has to have the ability to come back and say, hey, you said it, kind of like the kid in the Philippines. I, I need. You, you have to give me some flexibility, and I need you, you know, not to just pop in and, let's sit down and talk for forty-five minutes or an hour, because we have to be respectful of his time as well.
Yeah, us especially should not be doing that.
So, so, I, I don't know, look, we have a CEO, as it's been referred to. I don't know if we've reached a point yet where, uh, we need a COO, Chief of Operations, or some other sort of.
Technically, he is the COO, Kevin is the CEO by the charter.
Well, we can debate about what it means to be, quote-unquote, head of government under the charter as a president. For, for the purposes of the administration of the day-to-day government, Mr. Rayner is CEO. But my point is still, do we need a Chief of Operations or some other adjunct? Because you mentioned, you should delegate, and the question's always, delegate?
To who? Well, I mean, there's some things on this list that there are clear delegations.
If it's clearly a DPW matter, you delegate to DPW. But if it's not within clearly defined Police, Fire, then who do you delegate to? There really isn't a lot of staff. It's, it's this, it's Mr. Crosby, yeah.
No, I think it's Rich Tuliski. He's not here. That is on his, that is on his agenda here.
Yes.
But, but in the, in the past few years, we've done a lot of things to help alleviate that. We've taken the finance director's responsibility of negotiating contracts out of that and hired an HR person who has professional knowledge of how to do HR stuff to keep us out of issues with unions and keep us out of issues with, um, people and, and staff. So that helps to delegate some of those things and changes. So, so when you're, when you're talking about that C O O position, it's maybe not a person, but it's being able to delegate those things, like, to Lisa, you start with the, with the PMEA on their contract and, you know, work with me as, as needed, but that's, that's your project right now and until we get to excellent. So, those things happen.
That was, I think that issue is something that should be the subject of ongoing conversation between the Town Council and Rich, and, and I think we should all, and I think we do actually, we recognize that Rich is the, is best able to assess how much work he's able to accomplish and should be able to tell us openly and bluntly when, when our expectations become unreasonable and when he's gonna need help.
Especially in the next four months.
Yeah, exactly.
Budget season.
So I, I really like the fact that we're meeting here this morning to do this, because there is a mountain of work on these sheets of paper, and I, I'm hoping this is the last such conversation we're gonna have that you can continue to clue us in as to what else is going on, and what you can do, what you can't do.
I, I think one of the things, obviously, I've been remiss in, um, comes up every, every performance evaluation, transparency, communication, uh, so we're thinking about ways that we can better communicate to the council. I mean, I would say I've used my time administrative report, that really serves a different purpose. So I think much along the line with the school, uh, administration does, putting, uh, something together for you either on a weekly or bi-weekly basis, uh, so you can see, uh, what it is I'm working on. It, it allows you to ask more informed questions of me.
That existed for a month and a half, your predecessor, and then disappeared again.
Why did it disappear? Is it too much work, extra work, or?
Well, it just, yeah, I don't know. I, I'm not gonna comment directly on why that stopped, that had the previous regime. It was a while ago.
It was, it was logistically impossible.
It's, it's, it's not logistically impossible, but it, it's, it's what the council feels is enough information without being a burden on Rich to get too much information, spending two hours putting together a report.
Right.
That, that two hours could've been spent better doing some stuff.
Doing some, yeah, exactly.
I mean, can, can the administrator's report kind of cover that?
It does generally, you know, but, you know, a, a quick synopsis of, this is what I did this week. You know, I was here, I went to this meeting, went to that meeting, and that, not, it can't be a book that takes two hours to write.
Yeah, exactly, agreed.
It's a, you know, I'm very, I know how to do it, obviously, as, uh, as a captain commander, I always have to give the, the updates to the head on. Uh, so I know how to do it, and it's not a burden, so I'm just getting into the habit of doing it and just wanna do it in a convenient format, uh, which is easy. I, all I would ask, I, I'll give you a little vignette, and, uh, this is, under, under the term of no good deed goes unpunished. You know, there was a comment to the last council, well, maybe you can just put out a draft, uh, agenda, so we can kind of get a feel for what's gonna be on the agenda before you do the agenda. Uh, I think we did that twice. And it backfired, because it, it became more work, answering questions, why something didn't make it to the final agenda, and the accusation that we were trying to hide things and trying to defend ourselves, so I just said, stop it. And all it asks, if I'm, if I'm giving you updates, those are updates, ask me questions if you want clarification, but if it's gonna be used as a bully hammer over my head, then fire me, you know, because I don't have.
So, well, so I, you know, I knew we were gonna be discussing this, so I've been thinking a lot about, you know, what I think as a newbie here, your, quote-unquote, job is. And I, I look at this list, and to me, I think it would be very useful to, to split it all up into five very big-picture, like, top-of-the-ticket items that you work on. For me, off the top of my head, like, budget is number one, staff and municipal contracts. Three is like town documents, like the comp plan and the zoning, like you said. Four is maintaining facilities and town assets. And five is like communications. And to me, like, pretty much everything should fall into, you know, one of those general categories. If it doesn't, it's like in the miscellaneous and maybe shouldn't even be in this list. But anyway, and for my, you know, in being able to assess our strategy as a town going forward, it'd be very useful to understand what percentage of your time is spent on each of those items. Like, if the budget takes seventy-five percent of your time, then maybe, like, I don't know, maybe we need a facilities manager. I don't know. Do we have facilities managers? Or, you know, then it's easier to identify where we maybe need more help. Or maybe, you know, obviously, you probably know this better, but it, just for our information, I think that would be, make it very helpful in addressing priorities, engaging, you know, success metrics relative to those priorities. And another question, is, have, have you gone through this process with prior town councils? Because I'm getting the feeling like this is not something you've done before.
No, absolutely. I have done this, but I'll be quite honest, I didn't do it last year because I got fed up.
Yeah, okay.
And the previous year, we did it and the town council laughed and said, so what are you going to do then? What are you going to do next? It was, it was not very well...
This is a very serious undertaking. We didn't just throw this together.
Like, yeah.
This is articulated with the comp plan. Everything that is listed in here is either required by charter, by ordinance, or the comp plan. Every action item is tied to a policy which is tied to a goal which supports the vision of the town. And my guidance to the staff is anything that we undertake, anything that we suggest to the council, anything that we want to spend money on, if I can't tie that thread from what it is you want to do up to the vision, then we have either misappropriated resources or the policy's wrong.
I, I agree with the five things you noted, but I would say the first two things, which was budget preparation and managing employees and contracts, that usually would not be listed as your goals because that's just your fundamental job. I would say the next three are things that are sort of on top of it, which would be finalizing our key town planning documents, which would be the comp plan, the hazard mitigation plan, and the five-year rolling capital improvement plan. So finalizing key town planning documents, one. Number two, managing our capital assets, including the police station, transfer station, Cogishell School, et cetera. That's kind of a specific thing. And then the third and last thing would be communications from the town and to the town. And just because, to answer the question Danielle asked a long time ago, me, it's like, how do you find out what's going on in the town without swimming through all the minutes of past meetings? It's a little bit difficult as a citizen to know that. And it's also difficult sometimes even, well, I'll leave it there. So again, if we could make those last three things your goals and the first two, budget prep, managing employee contract negotiations, just the background of stuff that's included in everybody's review, I think we're heading in the right direction of setting your priorities. Does that, how does that sound to?
On that, I think that sounds exactly right. I just want to emphasize from my perspective that finalizing the comp plan is an enormous undertaking and an enormously impactful undertaking and, and requires a lot of time. People have, have been put into date. It has slipped past the time that it's supposed to have been done for, for reasons that we don't need to follow. The point is, in order to provide personnel bandwidth to complete it, we need to understand that if we ask for other things, it means that we'll put off the comp plan.
And maybe that's why we need to prioritize.
Exactly. That's what Rich is trying to do, obviously.
But, but from a comp plan, a comp plan standpoint, I mean, that's really in the hands of the planning board to some extent. We've gone through a lot of things and I think now it gets to the next phase where it's going to start to come before the council, correct?
Yes, correct.
So from, from the town administrator's standpoint, that, I mean, it's a priority for us as the town to get it, but that might, you know, it's going to, I, I think it's obviously a priority for the town to get done. That will take up some of your time, but I think that's kind of moving in a...
It is moving in the right direction, but it's...
Moving in the right direction.
You know, why, I don't take all the credit for this, but why is the comp plan where it is today? And I'm talking about the good part. Why is, I mean, we've been, the last element is done.
That's been a full year.
Because I came on board and I saw that nobody's done anything with it and Gary and I sat down and talked to Guy and, okay, let's kick this, start the process. Why is it on my list? Even though it's with the planning board, obviously, it's Guy's project, right? But it's my town planner who's doing the work, right? And that Venn diagram is huge and goes back to what, who do I have to work on, what you task me to do? On top of it, you know, this is, he's still got a real day job. And the, the people that walk into the building official's office, the planner's office eclipses the number of people that walk into my office. So if I get something and those four people, those five people, depending on what it is, that I can get to work on something, it almost always includes Gary or Rich or Barbara, takes them away from that big ticket item. So I have the comp plan, I have the comp plan on there because, one, I think most of you ran on it. Two, it's required, the town has to get it done. And if I don't support it, it will slip even farther. So I...
No, I, I totally, I, I understand. And I, I kind of just go back to when I look at this list, and this is just my own opinion. I, I know some of it may fall, Danielle made a good point about certain categories. But, I mean, realistically, we're halfway through the, you know, this, the year. You know, this time of year, it's all, it's all focused on budget and a lot of these things are going to drive the budget. So some of these things will fall into place. So, you know, to me, budget is always high on the list. Hey, I do think determining that town staff and making sure that, you know, if, if we have holes in the resources, maybe we need to understand that a little bit better. Again, as we're looking at budget, we're, you know, is there options? Yes, no, maybe. But these are the kind of discussions we need to have sooner than later. We still got to close out the police station. That still takes up enough of your time. We still got, you know, we can't lose sight of that. That's something that, you know, is coming to the end, but the hardest part, that last ten percent of closing out a job, takes a lot of time. And, you know, so those, I mean, those are three big things right off the bat that I, I mean, I appreciate all of this information and giving us better backup to understand that, you know, some of, some of what we may perceive as his staff really is not at his disposal. Where it may be in other departments, he does have some limitations. I think there's been strategies put into place coming into this where, like, Michelle mentioned, Eve mentioned, sorry. You know, we have an HR director now to help you with some of those things. Negotiating some of these contracts are, are going to be a big part of where we end up with our budget. So it all comes back. We can't, we, we have to be very careful not to put everything in a silo. Because you cannot just say, we're going to do this and it's not going to affect this silo over here. They're all intertwined. So the town administrator's time, and to put together specific goals. A specific goal is to sit here and say, and this, this, these are priorities, but a specific goal is to look at Rich and say, Rich, we want you to develop a budget that comes in at two percent, that does not go any more than two percent above an increase. That's a specific goal. We can say, Rich, we want to make sure that you want to, that this wonderful police station that we're going to have is going to be done and is going to be kept underneath that $10 million. That's a specific goal. It may not be achievable, but it's a specific goal. You can't go, I don't think we can go any more than four or five of those specific goals. We want, you know, you could say, Rich, we want to make you two percent budget and we also want you to get back, um, where's rotating in here somewhere? It's in there down there at number fifteen or sixteen. You know, we want to see that goal from the seven fifty to get back close to that million dollars so we continue to better our roads. There's, I could think of fourteen or fifteen different things that can be on this list that are specific. Develop an infrastructure plan with DPW and, and the planning department that addresses other infrastructure that we're not even talking about here. You know, there is, there's going to come a time, we're going to have to start digging up roads to start replacing sewer pipes. We're going to have to, you know, Mrs. Jufusa mentioned the hazard mitigation plan. We're going to have to start thinking about ripracks and seawalls and, you know, protecting people's properties and protecting town property. I mean, there's a thousand different things on this list. But if we're going to give, if we have goals, we need to make them very specific and pointed, not just this, here, you know, these, these are priorities. It's not just, give them five specific goals. And whether that's two percent on a budget, get that police station in on a time. Figure, you know, figure out the LED thing, which is great because I don't know how many of you guys have paid attention, but Johnson came across and said, we ain't paying for state roads anymore. So guess what? Neither do we. We're not paying for state roads anymore. Yeah, state lights. So, and we get a lot of that. I, I, I don't even want to make a guess, but I'm going to guess eighty-five percent of the streetlights we pay for in this town are on a state road. East Main, West Main, Union Street, twenty-four.
Union is a state road?
Yes. Half of Middle Road, Spring Street. Hedley is not in this town. Turnpike, Crystal Ferry. Those are all state roads. If you go over here on the twenty-four, by the garage, there's thirty-eight lights by the, the, the state garage. Yeah, not, not all state roads. Spring Street is state.
Twenty-two percent.
Park Avenue.
Twenty-two percent of the roadways in Port Arthur are state roads.
But of that twenty-two percent, I would guess eighty-five percent of where the lights are, right?
I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, but to, you know, but that falls under, you know, continue to pursue renewable energy projects. Obviously, that ties, as Keith was saying, it ties into the budget. We're looking for ways to save money and do things better, be better, be fiscal, fiscally responsible to the citizens of the town. You know, is it the highest priority right now? It may have just shifted as a result of the Johnston thing. So, I mean, the five towns that, that are working on this together, we're going to take a pause and reevaluate this next week and see where we stand with respect to that ruling. Is there still, you know, there's still going to be a huge impact to the budget, whether it's streetlights or we just stop paying the state bill. We'll get there, but I, I'm taking lots of notes here. I think what we do is, you know, after I've heard from all of you, I'll put something together that tries to encapsulate what I've heard from you today.
Well, can I ask you to say?
Can we do it now?
Yeah, can I ask you to say what you, if you had, you heard what Keith said would be his three or four top priorities? What would be your top three or four priorities?
In the next six months, it's very, it's, it's, obviously, every, every year, the goal is two percent of the budget. I mean, that's staring me in the face right now. The updating of the, the rolling fight here capital improvement plan and folding in the facilities, report, the police station.
Wait, 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 so, number one would be two percent budget?
I'm going to push back on that and I'll say what, but go ahead and finish what you're...
Those are his priorities.
This is what you can, my, my, I always hear two percent. It's not that I just, I do, I present the budget that needs to be presented to the town.
Yes.
In my...
So, so that's my, my, my point. I'm sorry to interrupt you. This body, the town council, needs to be the policy-setting body. The charter says we are. What I expect from a town administrator is a presentation to us of a budget that reflects what you believe is required. If that comes out to some percent, call it two-point-one, it should be up to us to decide what gets cut to bring it to wherever we wanted to bring it to. Rather than just say, go do two percent and then all of it's on you. And that, to me, is an application of our responsibility to decide what is funded and what isn't.
I say in my letter every year, the council says my goal to present to you a fiscally responsible balance sheet.
And nobody wants the budget to operate through inflation. We just have to see.
We have our guidelines to the staff.
Right.
My directive to the staff. But overarching, I mean, without getting into specific numbers, it's budget, it's capital improvement plan, police station, comp plan. Those are the four things in collective bargaining agreements. Those are five things right now that are, those are the walls at my door.
I don't have a problem with just saying that those should be your priorities.
They have to do.
And anything below that should either be delegated or kicked down the road until after those things are done.
Sometimes it's easier said than done.
No, I know.
Because one of those things that fall into, that aren't specifically numbered or, or put into there, affect it.
Correct. I mean, there's a lot of little things that go into making that budget happen, but they can still be considered within that number one top priority.
There are other things that affect it that are out of his control. The school department signed a new contract.
There will always be fires.
No, but I mean, specific things. The school department went and signed a new contract right before the election with a union that now is going to possibly tie his hands into how he has to negotiate with the union.
About two percent harder than they need to.
Yeah. I mean, that's something he has to deal with to be able to work on priority number one.
Those are things that fall out of his control that, you know, that communication needs to be done to make sure that we're not, lack of a better term, shooting ourselves in the foot.
I mean, we're going to be rating Rich in July, August on his, the, his ability to meet these goals that we're setting for him. But I think we, we're a rational group of human beings. Stuff happens. I mean, if a category five hurricane comes sweeping across, of course, that's going to change a lot of the goals that we set for, for Rich. I think it's just be, you know, just be reasonable about this. And we'll see what, what part of the priorities, what needs to be achieved, recognizing that things may change.
I mean, just, I just hold up the, the budget and the actuals for, and I'm just going to use the streetlights. And if we can, God forbid, get at this, a hundred and, a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars in fiscal sixteen. So if, if my guesstimate is right, that eighty-five percent are state roads, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars that we're not going to theoretically pay.
That's a fair assumption.
But that was... No, I mean, the state has already said that if we stop paying, they're going to pick it up. They're not going to shut the lights.
Well, Albea said it.
All right, hold, hold on. Let's let Rich...
Make sure everybody understands, say, I don't know that the fight on this is over because what Albea said is that we won't turn the lights off. They're LEDs. We'll keep them on. Well, now all the state lights are LEDs.
Well, yeah, well, we're going down a long road here, but here's, here's what he also said. He said the agreement was that when, when a town called and said, hey, I need a light at this corner, the state would say, sure, we'll put it up. And you have to pay for that light. What that morphed into is, which is going to make you pay for all the lights. Because we did not ask for the thirty-eight lights that are on the exit, at, at, you know, at the garage, but we paid for those. I think the, and to just to follow up on the, the streetlights, and then these are good things to kind of continue up with. But I don't think we're going to get an answer on that before this budget. I think that fight is, there's still a lot down the road. I mean, that was a, a three million dollar settlement. If you read into it a little more, it was really two million worth of lighting. So Johnston kicked in another million dollars somewhere along the line. So I think that fight is still going to, going to linger. But we have a program. We probably need to be cautious, do more due diligence on it to see what will happen. You know, so it's, again, it's on here, but I think if we could just kind of circle back because of the time, if we look at five, five goals, five goals, if they're draft-type goals. And, and just, just to reiterate what I was hearing, we're talking about five items. Obviously, there's, there's things that can, can fall under them, but one was budget. Two, and they might not be in this order, but the update to the capital improvement program. We also have to get a better understanding of the facility assessment, which has not been completed yet. So again, that still may be a little bit more long-term. We've got negotiations to deal with the labor contracts. We had, obviously, our, our comp plan and documents. And then it's still, which is up there, is the police station and closing that out. I mean, these are five, still five items. He's still got other things, but these might be your top five goals. If, if something has to slide in your day to, you know, your day-to-day or week-to-week operations. And we should be aware that these are the issues. So as some of these other things come up, I don't want to see them on an agenda saying, hey, we need to be doing this because Rich has got five other things.
Right, right, yeah.
But I still think you need to, if you're going to put a goal out there, you have to...
But I still think you need to, if you're gonna put a goal out there, you have to have it something that's measurable. And, and, you know, to Lenny's point, we, you know, we wanna establish a budget that keeps us to as close as possible to the two percent mark. As, you know, it doesn't go to two-point-three, does it get to one-point-eight, does it go to three? Who knows, but without that goal of saying, let's keep it at that two percent.
Right.
Come back in at four percent, here's, here's a bunch of money, and then we have to sit for three, for a month trying to figure out ways to cut it.
Right.
But if we give them a specific goal, that we, you know, our, our residents can't afford to go to four percent, if we can keep it to that two percent, and like I said, it comes at a two-point-one, it comes at a two-point-three, we can explain that and look at it. You know, last year was a, was a tough nut, because we had the five hundred thousand dollars of the, of the capital coming in for the police station. This year, it's already built into the budget, it makes it a little bit easier.
We anticipate filling a hole, and we don't anticipate, I don't expect a lawsuit.
So, to, to, to say, let's update the capital improvement plan that ties into the facility's assessment. The goal would be to, to making sure it reflects the entirety of what's needed over the next five or ten years for the town. You know, one hiccup we had last year, there was no ambulance put into the capital improvement plan, so we had to fix that this year. You know, maybe, you know, outside the normal budget process, so let's get that capital improvement plan that
Exactly.
most effectively establishes what our needs are for the next five years.
I totally agree, just wanna add that what happened last year, let's say with that ambulance, was not a last year problem. A lot of our problems that we're having today have to do, were built up over decades of deferred maintenance.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
So we can't expect things to be solved tomorrow when it took decades to grow.
Which is why.
I'm not expecting, I'm saying, let's, let's get it so it best reflects, and then we can look at that capital plan and say, okay, these are the priorities. You know.
So could I?
Can I just make a suggestion, I, I agree, I think we have five big goals, can we go down them one by one and just come up with a, you know, sentence that, that captures that goal? And I would add to that, that maybe we need to put some kind of target timeline in there, um, like the budget has to be done by a certain time, like the comp plan should be done by a certain time.
Those are statutory, I have plenty of.
Well, some of them are, but not all of them are.
Comp plan is not.
So I, some kind of timeline, at, at least for my education, would be helpful.
I think we're supposed to be rating Rich on stuff we have to have measurable outcomes.
Item number one, would you please?
Well, I, I mean, and this is a great, healthy discussion, I think we are waiting off a lot to chew here on Saturday morning, so I wanna just, again,
I can stay all day, Kevin, I agree.
But, you know what, you guys can stay all day, I will not, um.
I've got twenty-seven minutes, five minutes.
But I think, I think, I, I think what we have to, we've got some good points here, this is a great start, and I think, I think we're, I think we're trying to drill down a little too much right here, I think some of these things, this is my opinion, that, you know, we could refine a little bit if we put a little more thought into it, so now we've got five, we, we have five items, and maybe we could just, just take a, take a deep breath.
You have five items, I'm sorry.
I do, yeah, but.
Well, you, you kind of went five slash six on that.
There we go, okay.
It was kind of like a deep pipe on, oh, three major, oh, four.
For very large values of five.
I have, I have fifteen committed, oh, ten committed. All right, hold on.
So, it ended, it was budget, then it was, uh, capital improvements, rolling plan, you had facilities assessment.
They got you all together, right?
Hold on, hold on, I think that was, that, no, suppose to one thing, the capital plan, I learned, guys, same.
Um, you had negotiations.
Negotiations.
Um, comp plan, yeah.
I had the, yeah, negotiation.
Right.
Comp plan.
Comp plan and documents, police station.
Police station, that's fine. Those are, sorry, those are five, so I didn't, we're rolling, not a quorum.
Two of you are a quorum.
We have five type items here, and I think we've got some good direction. I, I don't know what the goal of the budget should be sitting here today, I think we have to look at inflation. But, but we've, historically, and I think this is what Rich was saying, he's been kind of using as, as a guide, the two percent, probably because it's around inflation, that's his, that's his starting point, but he could come back to us, obviously, as this process is going, and saying, listen, based on some of these contracts, based on, you know, the, the inflation, stuff that's already built into contracts, the two percent might not be reasonable, and that's the explanation piece that we're gonna need to know. But at least he's got a guide, a rule of thumb, and we know it's not set in stone, that's his rule of thumb direction.
Could we, uh, could I just say that I put it on the agenda for our next town council meeting, that we would approve our priorities, and maybe Rich could, um, you know, type up something in writing that we could just approve, um, that reflects what we've just said on Monday? Could I make that suggestion? And then, so we move on to the next one?
Yeah, maybe one segment's camped for each of those five.
Is that a motion or a suggestion?
It's a suggestion.
The motion will come on Monday.
She can make a motion that Rich puts these five items.
No, because it's only discussion items today.
So, so to the, so this.
Oh.
What, uh-oh, there it is.
This, this, I, discussion action under, is already listed on December twelve meeting.
Okay, hold on.
So, discussion, discussion action, motion to approve town administrative priorities reviewed at December eighth meeting, is already on Monday night's agenda, so.
So we can discuss this further and approve.
Yeah, and so Rich, um, you, the suggesting should come forward with.
Which is, which, that's all great, again, I'm gonna go back to that, if we're gonna utilize these five priorities or goals as a measuring stick for his reviews, there has to be something to measure against.
Yes.
There has to be a measure of outcome, okay?
Right.
Just, and I'm, I'm good with moving on to the next one, because Kevin's gonna go. But, but again, you guys can continue on without me, but.
No, no, I'll go with all the ones you have.
I mean, I have a fair idea where this is going, uh, may I suggest, uh, why don't I, I'll list these slides and what I think the metric is, and give you something that's measurable.
Yes, perfect.
Perfect.
Legislative priorities?
Now, the legislative priorities, I, um, apologize, is there a copy of them, or?
I haven't, I haven't.
They were circulated, you, you just sent an email in.
Right, I, I apologize because, um, I was hoping to have hard times.
Oh, I'll, I'll make one editorial comment about our legislative priorities, they get ignored, no matter what we do.
We understand, but that is your feeling, however, we still think we should do it.
Okay, hold on, um.
You know, I, to me, number one priority should be, ask the state to start giving us fiscal state aid again that they took away eight years ago. That is, you know, the, one of the stated priorities of the governor in her first term was to reduce the burden on property taxpayers, and it has never happened. Specifically for suburban towns like Portsmouth, it's gotten worse.
Sure, I, I would add to that, so this is something I spoke about on campaign trail, which seems like ages ago. Rhode Island general law, chapter forty-four dash forty-five, title forty-four, chapter forty-five, the Omnibus Property Tax Relief Act, uh, stated what I think is a great policy idea. Paying for schools with property taxes is ultimately not a fair or good way to pay for things, it ends up with too much of a burden on property taxes. So they passed a law that says we're gonna cap property tax increases. And in, as a quid pro quo for that, that's language from the law, it's a quid pro quo, we will, I'm reading from the law, uh, the aid formula should be increased until the state and municipalities equally share the cost of providing local education. We get barely ten percent of the cost of our education, so, like you said, it could be ignored.
So read into that, so if I'm sitting in the general assembly, and I look and I say, okay, and I'm gonna use very round numbers, it's the, for all, to educate all of the children in, in the state, we spend a billion dollars. And the state kicks in half a billion dollars, and the towns kick in the other half, they're justified on that, they're meeting that law. That doesn't mean that they have to, to do it equitably across the towns, which is what is happening to us.
Well, well, we are treated negatively, and I would argue that this means something different than, you know, as a whole, means share the cost with the municipalities, means as a municipality, you should have, but, but it, it, it goes to a very simple concept. The aid formula cut Portsmouth's budget, uh, by, I forget about a couple hundred thousand every year for the last ten years. Right, uh, and which means we either have to raise taxes on local properties, or cut programs out of schools, or what have you. So it puts us in a difficult situation, and I think we need to advocate for that, sure.
Thanks. So that's definitely something that I think we need to work on, I did not include it on my list that I sent to Kevin, because I think that's probably something that the school committee is focusing on.
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt.
You, you are right, but we also, we need to.
Reinforce it, all right, fine.
We're the ones that set the tab.
The school committee also does, should not be advocating for fiscal
Aid.
Aid changes, where the taxing authority, the school department is, we need to be hammering them to say, we need, let's, call Spain a Spain, we need more money.
If I could, I'd just like to take one step back, um, sorry, because, no, it's all good, it's all good discussions. Um, what I tried to do is, again, for those of you that were able to send me some stuff, I tried to get it on here. But what I also tried to do was take a look at what we did the previous year, to see, there, and there's some overlap, there's some consistency, and I think it's, I think it's important to have some consistency in our requests to our legislators, so that it's not every year we come up with a new list of things, because to, to some extent, we don't know where some of our requests went. Like, how much traction did we get last year? So one of the things that, that I was thinking about was trying to identify, what, when we submitted stuff last year, which ones did they actually
Work on?
Work on, where did it go, did it go to the House, did it go, like, what committee did it end up with, or did it ever get to a committee? Because if we asked for certain things last year, it never went anywhere, maybe we should have a conversation with some of our legislators before we finalize something to say, we, what can, uh, we have a wish list, right? But which ones might be reasonable? I mean, are, are we just gonna fall on dead, you know, dead ears again? Um, which ones can help the town? I mean, some of these might be bigger, big picture issues, and they're good issues, but let's, let's focus on what can help the town. I, I like the ideas about the, the state roads, I like the ideas about the infrastructure, the resiliency.
They might actually do something about those.
Yeah, well, those might be something that, maybe it's some low-hanging fruit, you know, so the, there's a lot of good stuff in here. What I, what I'd like, though, is if we, if we have a list, or if we have an item, we've got, you know, and some of these have very, very detailed support, that's the kind of thing where we can, you know, better state our case to our legislators, but let's also identify the ones that, you know, we can be consistent and ask for it, because there might be a bigger issue that's beyond Rhode Island, beyond Portsmouth. But, you know, let's, let's try to also hone in on the ones that we think can help us. And again, I, I think the state roads, the infrastructure, we're on an island, if we're not focused on some resiliency issues, we, we should be. Um, whether or not, and I'm not going down sea level rise and any of that stuff, because everybody has a different opinion, but I think resiliency is a big deal, because we do get hit with storms, we get hit with hurricanes, we get hit with nor'easters, we get the blizzards. And so if there's certain things that, if there's avenues, but some of that stuff might be state-level, it might also be federal. There may, there might be money coming out of EPA.
So, you know, another way of looking at what we're gonna be submitting to our legislators, there are goals that might be achievable that Matty Olo and Matt and I might allow to come up for a vote, but there are also items that are, that are the right thing to do, they will help our town. We know they're not gonna vote on it, but we should probably make the case that they should anyway, just because we, you know, yeah, we should.
No, a, a, absolutely, but I think it's.
But all need to be included in that.
Yeah.
The consistency, because we did ask for certain things, one, one thing that we, and I just wanted to bring it up, um, the school aid formula, I, I did make a note, but we also talked last year about, you know, some, uh, assistance, and I couldn't find anything on the, there was stuff last year about the marijuana legislation. You know, they, they're starting, and you hear it, and hey, you can go buy it in Massachusetts, you come into Rhode Island, it's illegal, I mean, we know it's around, we just need to make sure we've got, you know, we don't lose sight of that with our, our legislation, you know, just what can be done, I don't know.
Is there really a Portsmouth issue?
Yes, yes, so, so if I could just.
We fund a coalition, I mean, there's.
If I could, if I could pipe onto that specific topic, because that was one of my legislative priorities, I think it is foreseeable, whether, whether it's, I did not.
Oh, all right, I'm like, did I, sorry if I missed.
I think it is foreseeable, what, what, whatever our personal positions might be on the advisability of recreational marijuana, I think it is foreseeable that Rhode Island at some point in time will adopt a law allowing that.
Probably sooner rather than later.
And I think it is also foreseeable that an existing, uh, uh, facility like the Cleveland Passion Center sited in Portsmouth might be a licensed operation. So I think Portsmouth and other communities in Rhode Island, all of us frankly, should advocate that any structure that's put in place to, to legalize should allow the municipalities, uh, where these facilities are located, to benefit from some tax structure, because we are going to bear the responsibility of increased police, or even roads, or what hap, whatever it might be, we're going to bear increased costs because it's located in Portsmouth, and so any, uh, legalization structure that's put in place should have the ability to funnel some tax monies to the municipalities where they're located.
That seems as simple as doing, it's just like the hotel room tax.
Exactly, it's a, the, the analogy to the tourist tax, the hotel tax is exactly on point, yeah.
So I think we have a, I mean, what I sent around was, was twelve items, we probably could add the school aid formula, and maybe some, and, and I'm sorry, Line, if I, if you want to send me yours, I'll add them in.
Sure.
Um, but, you know, again, and I know that there's a, a, a motion or on the agenda to talk about this on Monday, and, you know, maybe that's when we can, you know, just kind of fine-tune it on Monday night, um, I'm okay with that, I, but I, I just wanna make sure that we're, you know, we're identifying any cross-references, we probably don't have time to reach out to our legislators to say, hey, which, you know, which one of these have a higher success rate?
No, I think if, if we get, their, their only request is that we do it on Monday night, we get it to them, that gives them the ability to do the research, and even when we discuss it with them, they'll be able to say, this side of the snow wall's gonna attack.
Right, and some of this backup, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good backup here, so if you, or links, and I didn't have time to go searching off links, I tried to, I tried to pick up the ones that, that were in my, in my wheelhouse, some of these are not in my wheelhouse, I'm just putting it out there. Um, so I tried to look at the ones that, that I could, but, but I think if we do that, and we can, you know, provide those additional links so that our legislators can be more informed of what our position is, it's all been, I mean, it's good, it can be.
So can I add to that? I, I think, um, my opinion too is like, if we give them a list of fourteen, I think it's okay for us to leave our legislative priorities rather vague, because that gives our legislators some flexibility as to how to address those priorities, because we don't know what exact legislation's gonna come out from each of those. So I think it's important to, to keep an open mind within each of those, those issues.
And evidence is helpful, but as we do our annual, uh, you know, arena martyrdom act with our single payer bill, evidence seems irrelevant when you're talking to the gentleman.
And, and, and that's one that was not in my wheelhouse, so I.
So just to clarify, on Monday night, this is a item, we, we could vote on these, um, and if anybody, let's say, doesn't like one, or you wanna take one out, we can have a vote on those items, but otherwise, we will vote as a group to endorse the items.
Yeah, up or down on each item.
Up or down on each item.
Come up with a list.
And, and then, um, if that closes this, and we have a chance to look at all these, because, you know, um, and then, just to close out this meeting, I think the next agenda item is mine, and I'd like to move it off the, this agenda, because, um, actually, it was there by mistake, but secondly, a constituent said that, um, they were interested in, in the topic and can't come to a Saturday meeting, so we can move it to.
Was there a?
I, I think it's better served on a normal council meeting.
A normal council meeting, so that I would move to, move it.
Uh, town set aside.
Oh, with all the time.
Is that a motion?
The open forum.
Ms. Yufusa.
Yes.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, can we vote on two?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Be the first meeting to change.
That, you can always vote, even if it's listed as discussion and action, you can always motion to table something.
For scheduling.
So she said no discussion, right? So, motion to table.
Uh, is our motion to table? No, wait a second.
The motion is to move it to a different agenda, we can figure out the date, I think, is what.
To a future, yeah.
On the future regularly scheduled council meeting.
Correct.
The motion is second, all those are tabled.
I, we're sending credit.
We have to sign it.
Opposed?
Jesse's absent.
Yeah, so he did six, zero. For the record, we've lost.
Well, he's, he's, he's there, but not, barely, barely.
He cannot vote.
He cannot.
That's right.
Yeah.
He can't vote, he's, he's there, but.
If he was disabled, he couldn't be here, that's one thing, but.
Yes.
Under, under future meetings, I know we have a, um, we discussed doing it on the nineteenth, um, and I have a engagement for my son that I would like to go to, is there any, she actually, if, is there any? If, is there any objection first with the council to moving the school committee's interviews to the 20th? And I will preface that by saying, as long as the people who have all of the candidates who are gonna put forth can do the 20th as well. If not, I will adjust my schedule, because I don't, I don't wanna miss the meeting, but moving it from Wednesday to Thursday, I think moving it from Wednesday to Tuesday is a tighter timeline, but just that 19th is, something came up before.
What day is June 7th's meeting in the town council chamber?
That's the 13th.
So, so it would be moved from Wednesday to Thursday to 20th?
Or, or the Wednesday to the Tuesday, but that only gives you one less day to do the review of the...
Yeah, I'll have to check to make sure that, that the other 20s...
And make sure that it's not that the, that the council chambers are available that night.[1717.72]